Good morning, everyone. My name is Mike Terry. I'd like to welcome each of you here to this regular monthly hearing of the Planning Commission. Our group is an advisory board to the Board of Commissioners. It's our job to investigate every request that comes to the county for a rezoning request. We make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners and all final and binding decisions will be made by them, which is generally at their meeting, which will be two weeks. I believe that's the 18th, John, is that right, of August?
Correct.
So that'll be their hearing. Finally binding decisions, though, will rest with them. It's our custom to always invite various members of the local clergy to open our meetings with a few words, perhaps a prayer, and it's my pleasure at this time to introduce to you Reverend Christopher Chappell from the Grace Community Church in Kennesaw. He's back again, and we're glad to have you with us. When he finishes his remarks, we'll invite our Officer of the Day, Officer Ott, to come and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. When you see him come forward, please stand as you're able for our pledge of allegiance. Pastor, go ahead.
Let us pray. Spirit of the living God, God of the Most High, we thank you for this morning. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you, God, for the joy of this day. We praise you now for allowing us to come together one more time in health and strength. We thank you for wisdom. We thank you for partnership. We pray now that you will be exalted. We thank you for clarity. We pray now that through our lives today, that someone else's life will be unpacked for the better good. Oh, God, we thank you, God, for this group that has gathered today, and we thank you, God, that as we reason together, you will be glorified, and that those around us will be lifted and exalted. We give you glory and honor for this day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chris.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. First on the agenda this morning, as always, will be our consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and the staff have fully investigated and were satisfied that all the pertinent issues have been dealt with and for which there's no known opposition. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, this is John holding his hand up over here, will read those cases into the record, and he will ask if there's anyone present in opposition or wishing to make a comment on that case. If there is, we may elect to pull that from the consent agenda, in which case we would hear it in its regular sequence. Next, we will hear cases that were either held or continued from our last hearing. And lastly, we will hear all of our regular cases, again, in their regular numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked by Mr. Peterson to come forward and identify themselves, be sworn in as is appropriate. When the opposition is asked to come forward, they will also need to be sworn in, and you'll present yourself to Mr. Jason Campbell. Jason, raise your hand. He's on the front row here. Jason will take care of the swearing-in ceremonies for us, and be sure you sign his little sign-in sheet there, because we need to get the spelling of your name absolutely correct. Please be aware, and this is probably the most important thing that I'll tell you, if you choose to speak, we allow 10 minutes collectively for each side. That's not 10 minutes per person, but that's in total. So if you have a number of people wishing to speak, be sure you're aware of that. Gauge the length of your comments so that everyone can have an opportunity to speak if they choose to do so. At that point, when you speak, there is no rebuttal process. You're just addressing us to tell us what it is you'd like us to know. But we may elect to call you back up a little later to clarify some points. So that's how we operate. Mr. Peterson, do you have any other instructions for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have some other announcements to make. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. That's LUP 23, Legacy Christian School, Inc. That case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Additionally, Mr. Chairman, Board, there's been a request by the applicant rep for rezoning case Z-67, Black Builders LLC, to withdraw this case without prejudice, and we would need you to vote on it and to withdraw it, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Okay. Whose case is that? Kristy, go ahead, please.
The applicant has been working with adjacent neighbors, and I think this is a good idea for them to withdraw the case and continue to work. So I'll make a motion that we allow Z-67 to be withdrawn without prejudice.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Williams. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? So that Z-67 will be withdrawn. That was without prejudice, right? Without prejudice. Okay. Thank you. What else, John?
Mr. Chairman, Board, there are two cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued by the staff, and they will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-59, R-Frame LLC. That case was continued by the staff and will be heard at the September 1st, 2015 Planning Commission zoning hearing. Additionally, rezoning case Z-77, Seven Springs Development Company Incorporated, was continued by the staff until the September 1st, 2015 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So those two cases will not be heard today. There is one case on today's consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board, that's going to be continued by the staff. Apparently, there's a problem with the required mailing on it. So the staff is going to continue rezoning case Z-72, Greenhouse Properties of Atlanta, until the September 1st Planning Commission zoning hearing. So we will continue Z-72.
Okay. So we have three cases that John mentioned, Z-59, 77, and 72. So if you hear for those cases, those are going to be continued for 30 days to our next cycle and will not be heard today. Who's 59? Any? Okay. We're okay with all of these. I am familiar with 72. That's mine, and we did have a problem getting the letters out, so that's appropriate that we continue that one. So I would entertain a motion to continue.
Staff continued.
Staff continued all three. Okay. So we're fine. Okay. Good. What else, John?
I'd like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. The cellphone ringing does interfere with the broadcasting presentations. So if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
All right, sir.
Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for August 4th, 2015. Rezoning case Z-54, Willie A. Polston Jr., request rezoning from PSC and R-20 to CRC for the purpose of an automotive paint and body shop in Land Lot 34 of the 18th District. The property is located on the east side of Powell Drive, south of Veterans Memorial Highway. Staff recommends deletion to NRC, subject to the following conditions. Letter of conditions from Mr. Parks Huff, dated August 4th, 2015. Site plan received by the zoning division on April 2nd, 2015. With the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Light auto repair only. No outdoor storage or outdoor display of merchandise. Parking be striped and paved to county standards. District commissioner to approve paint colors on the exterior of the building. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Fire department comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-54. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-70, KW LLC, request rezoning from GC to LI for the purpose of an automotive repair shop in Land Lot 295 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Atlanta Road, south of Austin Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Revised site plan received by the zoning division on June 25th, 2015. With the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable stipulations from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated June 25th, 2015. Spill pollution prevention plan and protocol to be approved by Stormwater Management Division. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-70. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-74, Paul Edjua Popil LLC, request rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of medical offices in Land Lot 1140 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Austin Road, south of Warren Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on June 4th, 2015. With the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Landscape screening buffer measuring 20 feet in depth to be planted adjacent to residential neighbor to the north, located within Warren subdivision. Buffer plan to be approved by county arborist. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-74. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-75, Maricel G. Vargas, request rezoning from PSC and R-15 to R-15 for the purpose of a single-family home in Land Lots 695 and 696 of the 19th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Red Bud Court, northeast of Pear Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Apply for permit for the carport. Variances approved for existing buildings only. Any new variances will go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And development inspections comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-75. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-76, Gulf 10 LLC, request rezoning from O&amp;I to NRC for the purpose of a restaurant with drive-through in Land Lot 7 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Powder Springs Street, northeast of Cunningham Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on June 4th, 2015. With the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-76. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-78, Frank Ward, request rezoning from R-80 to R-30 for the purpose of a single-family house in Land Lots 365 and 376 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Wright Road, east of Popular Springs Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received June 4th, 2015. Allow additional 35,247 square foot lot off of private easement on Wright Road. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-78. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-79, Sanford C. Bennett, request rezoning from GC to LRO for the purpose of professional offices in Land Lots 31 and 30 of the 19th District and Land Lot 328 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Dallas Highway and Mount Calvary Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Applicant or developer to meet all LRO zoning criteria. No outdoor storage or displays. All buildings to be demolished within 90 days of the final Board of Commissioners decision. Site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant's present? Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-79. Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 22, Kathleen E. Taylor, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults than the county code permits in Land Lot 186 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Sunbrook Way, east of Sunbrook Drive. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. No on-street parking. Approval is for two unrelated adults only. An applicant should not cause any nuisances to the neighborhood. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 22? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Keep your body awake. We're on a roll here, John. I think we need to keep this up. About half of these belong to or in Mr. Porter's district, and half are in Mr. Gunther's. So, gentlemen, do you have any position changes?
I do have several. With regard to Z-74, I'd like to strike two of the bullets that were read into the record because they're covered in the stipulation letter. The first bullet being light automotive repair only, no paint or body shop, and the second one being no outdoor storage or outdoor display of merchandise. And I have a couple of revisions to the stipulation letter that we received today. Item number seven, I would like to add to the end of that, that evergreen shrubbery to be used for landscaping. And then on item number 10, the NRC zoning shall, and it currently says include, it should be limited to light automotive repair with special exception for automotive upholstery and automotive paint and body shop only. That's changes to Z-54, and those have been discussed with the attorney for the applicant. Z-70, just on the second bullet, it said, "Letter of agreeable stipulations from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated June 25th, 2015." We need to add to that, "and" July 31st, 2015. And then on Z-74, one additional stipulation to be added. Any changes to the building architecture, facade, and/or color to be approved by the district commissioner? And that's been discussed with the applicant. And those are my changes.
I have one additional stipulation that I'd like to read into the record for LUP 22, and the applicant is here, and I believe we've talked about this. I would like to see the outside of the house painted and maintained where there's rotten wood over this next 24-month period of the land use permit. And I understand that that, you know, could be a financial burden, but I think it needs to be done.
Okay. So golf and skip, that concludes. Okay. So we have Z-54, 70, 74, 75, 6, 78, 79, and LUP 22 on the consent agenda with a few changes. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes that were submitted? So we have a motion from Skip. Can we get a second? Second from Mr. Porter, all in favor of the motion? So that is approved. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
All those folks on the consent agenda, you're free to go for the rest of the day, but come back on August 18th for the final decision.
Just so everyone will know, if you do choose to leave at any time during the hearing, if you would do so quietly, don't stand in the back and talk, because it is picked up on our microphone, and we'd prefer to have you outside talking rather than in here. So we'd appreciate that. Okay, John, what's first?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning case Z-86 of 2014, 01 LLC, request rezoning from R-15 to R-15 LLC for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in Land Lots 82 and 151 of the 18th District. The property is located on the south side of Old Alabama Road, west of Southland Forest Street, and at the western end of Angelia Drive. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-86. Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, Mr. Huff.
Good morning.
Whenever you're ready.
For the record, my name is Parks Huff of the law firm of Sam's, Larkin, Huff &amp; Valley, and I represent 01 in relation to this rezoning application. It's been a long time getting here, and I know that y'all have continued it many times and that the desire of the board was to hear the case today. This is, case has been continued for many reasons. Number one, we started out asking for an RA-5. It was originally zoned R-15, and we requested an RA-5 zoning. We've had multiple meetings at the church that's adjacent to the subject property with the local community. We've had a lot of dialogue with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and that dialogue, and you can see an aerial photograph of the subject property and the church that we surround. And that dialogue resulted in, number one, changing the request from an RA-5 to an R-15 OSC, using the OSC category in this. So to begin with, I mean, it started with a lot of, with a different rezoning request and a lot of dialogue with the local residents and input from Mabelton Improvement Coalition. This property, as you can see, is heavily treed, and one of the things that doesn't come across in the aerial photograph is that there's a significant amount of old growth oak trees throughout the draw in there. And one of the community concerns was wanting to try to preserve the trees, and so that was one of the reasons why we went to the OSC plan. However, when you go to an OSC plan, one of the things that you run into is then you have smaller lots, and then you have how that interfaces with the surrounding community. So we've had a lot of back and forth on how to create the separation, the buffers and such with the existing surrounding residents. It has resulted in a lot of different changes to the OSC plan over time. The last stipulation letter you have from me is dated April 21st, and it is basically requesting that it be zoned as an OSC plan. And what I have on the aerial, on the overhead projector now is an OSC plan that was, quite frankly, given to me today, showing the, actually, this one. Showing the subject property as, using this OSC layout. And you can see on the south, we've created a buffer adjacent to the subject, adjacent to the existing residences and along that entrance road. Those lots are obviously OSC lots, so they're smaller, so we have agreements on how to create that buffer, how to have a fence along there so that that buffer is preserved and protected for the adjacent neighbors. And you can see here the draw that comes through there with the creek line and such. It's got the whole old growth forest that we're trying to preserve. So this is an OSC plan, again, that was just presented to me today, so not only have I not been able to have a review of it, your OSC staff has not had a chance to review it. I've talked to Mabelton Improvement Coalition regarding this request, and what I'm asking for is that we have an opportunity to hold this case so that this revised plan can be reviewed by your OSC staff and get the proper input so that we can understand the plan and how it interrelates with the OSC provisions in the county code. We do think that OSC is a way to handle this case. I think everyone is in agreement on that, and it's coming down to the details of how to, and it is really coming down to each specific lot, how you, you know, how you have agreements with adjacent property owners and how you access these lots. So we've had a lot of back and forth. I think we're getting really, really close, but unfortunately, you know, it takes time, and it has taken time each time. So what I'm asking is that we be given an opportunity to hold this case, have this plan reviewed by your OSC staff for compliance with the code, and let us come back in 30 days with a plan that fully complies with the OSC code, not only the purpose, not only the letter of it, but the intent of it, so that we can preserve. I mean, one of the key elements of this plan is 6.14 acres of this 17-acre site is preserved as green space, open green space. That's 34% of this site is set off, will not be touched. And it's not just insignificant land, it's actually very, very valuable primary forest that deserves to be preserved if possible. So we'd ask that this case be continued. We also were asked to have some renderings of the homes, and again, these were submitted to Mick this morning, and it's very hard to tell, but they, in detail, but they're brick facades and different materials up front. And we've worked with, trying to come up with architecture that is pleasing to the community and will provide a nice neighborhood. So again, these plans were just presented also today, and we'd ask that this case be continued, or, excuse me, I never can get "continued" versus "hold," it can be "held" until next month to have an opportunity for this case to be reviewed by the county staff. Appreciate your time and your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huff. Let's hear from the opposition at this time.
Thank you. My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the vice president of the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and we too would ask your indulgence to hold this case for another 30 days and let us get a look at the latest site plan, which, as Parks mentioned, we saw for the first time this morning. We've been working on this case, actually, we started talking with the developer on this case before the application was filed, so this has already passed its one-year anniversary in our world. It hasn't in yours yet, but we have put a lot of time and energy into this, and we have done it because we truly welcome new development in our community. We are ready for 30-some new families to move to Mabelton and become a part of Mabelton. But I just have to tell you that we are immensely frustrated by the process, which has pretty much been a matter of, we talk right before a zoning hearing, we continue it, and then we don't hear anything again until right before a zoning hearing. So in the spirit of trying to look at the application itself and not so much think about the process, based on the last stipulations letter, there are a couple of thoughts that I want to leave with you and put on the public record. The final elevations that, we're still waiting for the final, final elevations. Parks and I spoke briefly before the hearing began. The computer-generated renderings do not clearly, cleanly show the areas that are brick. A quick glance looks like stucco or something else. They need to be sharper and clearer. We're looking for architectural interest on the fronts of the houses. No big blank walls, no big blank roofs. We haven't had a chance to look at that. We're looking for architectural features on the side of the first house. I think it's lot number one that's adjacent to Old Alabama so that we don't have an uninteresting sidewall of a home facing a major artery in our community. We have agreed verbally, but we haven't seen it in writing yet, that the front, that the lots, that houses on the lots on the entrance street will be staggered, the front setbacks will be staggered. The appearance of that street, very small lots, relatively large houses so close together, has been a concern since day one, that it not look like a monopoly board. So we're looking for a little bit of interest there created by staggering the front setbacks. We're looking for HOA covenants that prohibit conversion of garages into living space. That's a perennial issue, I think, probably everywhere. There's plenty of parking to be had when the houses are built, and five years later, everybody's car is parked in the street. Looking for a limitation on construction hours, 7:00 to 7:00 Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 6:00 on Saturday, no construction on Sunday. Making sure the construction vehicles are parked on the applicant's property, especially not on surrounding neighborhood streets. And allowing the Georgia Native Plant Society to rescue native plants before the development begins. We've got verbal agreement on that. In fact, we had verbal agreement on that, I believe, 45 days ago, but have not gotten to that point in writing yet. All that said, we've come a long way. Right now, this property is zoned R-15 for 27 lots. The application was RA-5 for 47 lots. We're now at R-15 OSC. Yesterday, it was 34 lots. This morning, it's 35 lots. So the major trade-off for us has been the stream crossing versus not the stream crossing. I don't know how many of the site plans you guys have seen, but we've seen iterations that put those last few lots at the end of the adjacent neighborhood street, the name of which escapes me at the moment. The most recent couple of iterations have connected them to the rest of the neighborhood, and that is the single biggest thing that we have been weighing back and forth, whether those last two or three lots, whether we should cross the stream and create the environmental impact that that does by losing that much more of the wooded area, but connect those homes to the rest of their neighborhood versus having those last two, last few homes come off the adjacent neighborhood street and not be connected to the rest of the neighborhood. So with that conundrum, to which I've got no answer, because we've not had time to look at this last plan, I would, again, ask that you hold this case and... look at this last plan, I would, again, ask that you hold this case and with the hopes that we can, that we can work diligently and quickly in the next immediate days to move this project along and get a final resolution for you next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. We're a bit frustrated, as clearly Mableton Improvement is, with this. I'll have some comments later. Gaunt, why don't you go ahead and take this? Thank you.
Okay. I'll echo that. We're very frustrated that for the last several months, we continued the case and there was no real progress made. And that's why we said, when they asked to have it continued yet again this month, we said, no, we need to hear the case, we need to move it forward and, you know, make some progress on this case. You know, there's still a lot of unanswered questions or things that have been discussed in meetings and not, you know, formally put into a STIP letter. I think Robin Meyer hit on several of the issues. I have, so I would echo all of hers without being redundant and say all of them. The new plan is 35 homes, and I believe the calculation with the OSC and with the density bonus is a maximum of 34 homes. So, I'd like to see the new plan brought into compliance, at least with OSC. And I would, just at a quick glance, and I only had a few seconds up there, that's the first time I saw it, I would say drop lot 13, which is that odd-shaped lot at the end of the main entrance, because it leads to some unique problems. You know, there's a number of other things that, you know, haven't been well-defined yet. There's some things from the 2005 zoning or 2006, like this case, that case dragged on for several months, started one year, finished another. The part of that case required the church entrance to be relocated with deceleration lanes, and I'd like to see that added into the stipulations, you know, that that's still going to apply to this case as well. Minimum home sizes, I think we really need to be looking at at least 2,000 square feet. In the past, some of the elevations we've seen have been, in fact, most elevations have been under that size. The elevations that we saw today appeared to be two of the four that we saw before. And there were two others that were informally shown to us that had two-story homes, and we didn't see any elevations with two-story homes, so we need elevations for that. You know, I think, I'm not sure if I just said it, but we had talked about, you know, 75% brick or stacked stone on the homes in the front elevation. Let's see. I have some comments here that I wrote, and I want to make sure I don't forget some as I went through some of the items before. Okay. I'm trying to not repeat what Robin Meyer said. The recreation area needs to be better defined. I couldn't see on that map. We've talked about a recreation area where a lot, I think it was 14 was before on the last plan that we saw, and, but we don't have any definition about exactly what's going to be included in that. We had some trails on one of the previous plans, and I didn't see that on this plan. You know, there's, there is still a lot of work and things to be done, and I wanted to hear the case because I think we need to let them hold it one more time. But next month, be prepared, and that means get us all the stuff and the staff, the information they need within the next week or so, so that they can analyze it, go through it, get comments out to everybody. It can't be that we're getting it the day before or the day of the hearing. You know, if I had to decide this case right now, I'd just recommend denial, because the applicant hasn't given us any information to give us anything better. You know, and what we've seen to date isn't any better than the plan that it's already approved for, that was approved in the 2005 zoning. So, the idea is if you're coming in, it's got to be better than the old plan. Those are my comments on it.
Skip.
I've got just a, just one comment. I agree with all those comments. Robin Meyer talked about staggering the look of the fronts of all those houses along that, the road as you come into the development. What strikes me is that the backlot ratio, the ratio of the number of lots along that stretch of that road compared to the lots that they're adjacent to and the adjacent neighborhood is something like two to one, or very close to it, it's about 12 to seven. And that's, that's pretty high. I don't think that's, I understand the need to have as many lots, to amortize the cost of the project, so forth, but that's just too many lots along that stretch, I believe. And they look like they're the smaller lots, the spirit of the OSC ordinance, and in fact, it actually says it in the OSC ordinance, that says the smaller lots should be on the interior of an OSC subdivision, not, and this would be on the exterior. So, I would, I would recommend, I'd like to see some reduction in the number of lots along that edge. And clearly, it has to be, the number of lots have to be within the allowable number, and so, maybe that's a place to start as well.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm beyond frustrated with this. Whenever an applicant comes to us, literally, as the meeting is starting here with a plan that's not even a very good plan, that is not acceptable. And so, Mr. Huff and I have spoken about this, and he understands that he needs to go back to his applicant and come back with the questions answered so that we can move on with this. We've allowed them so many extra times to come to us and just simply answer the questions. They're not returning phone calls, they're not bringing a plan to us that is acceptable. So, I completely agree with the comments that we've heard here today. It's frustrating. I know Mr. Huff is going to work on this diligently for us, and hopefully, we'll have a plan next time. So, everyone understands, if we continue a case, it means we don't take testimony at all, and there are reasons for that, which you heard earlier. But if we hear a case, we can hold it, and that's the difference between a hold and a continuance. In this case, we did take some testimony, and I think the motion is appropriate to hear and hold this for one more time. So, Gaunt, have you made that motion?
I'll make it right now.
Okay, let's go ahead.
I'll make a motion regarding Z86, that we hold it till our September hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of that motion. Okay, so, we're going to hold this one more time, and hopefully, we'll handle it next time. Thank you, folks. What's next, John?
Yes, sir. Rezoning case Z66, 825 Mars Hill LLC, request rezoning from R30 to R20 OSC for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in landlots 264 and 269 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north and south sides of Hattaway Road, on the west side of Marso Road, on the easterly side of D West Road, on the east side of Carter Road, and on the southeasterly side of Brown Store Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z66? Please keep your hands raised. Let the record show, there are seven people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you're not sure you're going to speak, but you might, come on up and let's get you sworn in. Doesn't mean you have to speak. We'd like to get this done all at one time. So, if you'd like to speak to Z66, or you think you might, come on up, let's get you sworn in. And I'll remind, since I see a lot of people now coming up, I'll remind you, we do have 10 minutes in total for you to present your case. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Moore.
Good morning.
Whenever you're ready.
Good morning, and thank you. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the applicant owner, which is 825 Mars Hill LLC, in this application for rezoning. This property is just over 35 acres. It's located at the intersection of several roads, but primarily the intersection of Hattaway, D West Roads, and Mars Hill Road in West Cobb County. The application seeks rezoning from its existing category of R30 to R20 OSC or open space community, which we think will be very valuable and beneficial, not only for the development of this property in a manner in which it can provide both benefits to the residents that will hopefully live here, but benefits to the surrounding area in terms of what it can provide, in terms of development techniques and preservation of meaningful open space that provides for what we think are visual enhancements, which are really visual preservation of this particular area. As you can see from the overhead that's now on your screen, the property is not wooded. This property was a, was really a working farm for many, many years. The family that owned a large part of the property in this area, the Brown family, ran this farm and ran it as a farm for many years until just recently, when they sold it. The first thing I want to show you is a site plan that was developed as a R20 plan. This R20 plan demonstrates how regular R20, and it could be R30 development, it would just simply be less lots. This is a total of 58 lots that is, that would be, could be developed under this property that meets all the R20 standards. As you know, but some others may not, when you develop under straight R20 or straight R30-type standards, lots can be in wetlands, lots can be in stream buffers, you can fill in farm ponds, and you can do those types of things to create the lot space under R20 or R30. It's just a matter of the number of lots that you would have. But you end up with a very straightforward vanilla arrangement that does not take advantage of what could be preserved and what could be done with this property. And with that, I want to show you now what our open space plan looks like, and he's going to turn that to the board, and I'll step, step over there so I can highlight what we think are some of the advantages, and many advantages, to this plan. So, let me orient you now with this proposed OSC or open space community plan. This is Hattaway Road and its intersection with Mars Hill here. This is the intersection with D West Road here and with Carter Road down here. So, you can see this property does have plenty of road frontage. What's proposed here is a total of 55 lots. From a density standpoint or a net density standpoint, that's 1.65 units per acre. But what you will see is, and we'll go into further detail in a minute with that, is a preservation of open space, meaning preservation of this existing pond, so it creates a water feature, so it creates a benefit to the community in terms of value and in terms of marketability, as well as preservation of this portion of the tract that stretches along Mars Hill Road. Again, by preservation of open space, that means it's undisturbed open space except for installation of passive walking trails, which means that are in keeping with the woods or with the ground that is there along this area to connect in. In addition, we have a large amount of open space on the other side of Hattaway Road. This is open space that is created at the intersection of D West and Hattaway Road, as well as stretches back through the middle of this tract, where you have a protection of a very, very small stream, but protection of some existing wetlands here as it feeds in and goes downstream on Mars Hill. And you also have open space that's going to be protected there at the intersection of Mars Hill and Hattaway Road as well. What that is doing, though, is preserving what we think is a visual aesthetic that's beneficial to this area. If you drive Mars Hill and Hattaway and D West Roads, what you will drive and see today is large areas of open space here, large areas of undisturbed open space along Mars Hill. Those will still be the case once this would be developed under this plan, so that visual preservation is available. In addition, what we have added to this and agreed to as part of our stipulation letter is extensive buffering. Along D West Road in this area here is an existing stand of trees, almost planted, beautiful trees that are right along the right-of-way there. It incorporates also a split-rail fence that comes along this area here. By utilizing OSC techniques, we're able to preserve those trees, and those will remain. We're able to save that stand of trees, which is beautiful and which really marks this area, as well as that fencing. We're able to do that by placing these lots here, which face out onto D West Road, which is also similar in nature to some of the other homes that are along this area. We're able just to have a single driveway access point that comes around and then comes out behind the trees. And that way, those trees are preserved, as well as the fencing, so you have that visual preservation again. And then also, what we're doing is implementing a minimum 20-foot landscape buffer on the road frontages. Like I said, this property has significant road frontages, and so, we have an extensive landscape plan that goes around the perimeter along these many road frontages, which will have heavy planning and keeping with that same style with split-rail fencing as well, and as well as additional landscaping buffer and preserve landscape perimeter buffer in this rear corner. Now, what I'd like to do is go into the detail of those buffers, because I think it's important, and certainly important, to the visual preservation of this tract. The first board is taken as a photo, and you can even see the zoning signs. And that's the trees I'm speaking of, for those that may not be familiar. Those are the trees that are along D West Road that will be preserved, and you can see the split-rail fence here, and you can see, it's very difficult to see, but we even superimposed on the background, you can do that with digital photography, where houses would be. So, you can see that the houses would be set back behind these trees, so that what people see today, they'll see tomorrow upon development. By utilizing those creative techniques, these trees and this buffer stays along D The next, while it looks similar, it's actually different. What we did was canvass West Cobb to say, okay, what do buffers along West Cobb roads look like, and how is that presented, and how has that been done, so that those who drive in West Cobb and have a feel that they talk about, and that includes many of us that are here, will recognize that. This is the roadside buffer that we were speaking of, the road frontage buffer that would be planted. This is one that we found, and this is one that we would be emulating for our purposes, and that's set out in our stipulation letter with a specific landscape plan with the numbers of plant materials and trees. And this is what that buffer would look like once it was planted, and incorporates a split-rail fence, also incorporates some birmingham where appropriate, so that you have extensive buffering along the road frontages. That not only helps the surrounding community and residents, it also helps those that will be living there. As I said, many of these homes, by nature of this property, having so much road frontage, will have homes that are, that will have road frontage, protects them as well, those future residents, and adds value to their homes, as well as value to the surrounding Also wanted to show you another visual representation of what open space looks like. If you drop out what would be developed in this property and then simply drop in what's going to be preserved, you can now see with this, with these roads, Hattaway, Mars Hill, and D West, how from a, over the, you know, up top, bird's-eye view of what's being preserved with this proposed OSC plan, including this pond, this area along Mars Hill, so that this area really stays exactly the same as it is today, so that this area stays the same as it is today. And that really provides, again, the visual preservation for the community, but also provides visual amenity of open space for those new residents. Lastly, it's a little bit smaller board, if you can, can you get that? It'd be easier if I put it up there. In terms of density, what we're proposing is 1.65 units per acre of 55 lots. This area is dominated by several categories. There's lots of undeveloped R30, that's larger, that's not developed as R30, but it's just simply acreage tracts that are still zoned R30, like the subject property, which is right here. This is Mars Hill Road and Hattaway Road. What you have, though, in the area, what's been developed, has been largely developed as R20, as a predecessor to open space communities, that is conservation subdivision or planned development such as Brookstone, as well as RA5 development, which is right here, adjacent to us on Mars Hill. Those surrounding densities are 1.75, two units per acre, 1.74 units per acre, 1.75 units per acre, even 2.89 units per acre in the RA5 section. What we're proposing is 1.65 is less than an R20 density. What we're proposing is 1.65 is less than an R-20 density, much more in keeping, we think, with recognizing the R-30 nature of some of the surrounding area, but also recognizing that the area's been developed as an R-20-type density, not as an R-30 density. With that, we have a stipulation letter dated July 29th that incorporates all of what I just reviewed with you, in terms of the stipulations and the commitments to those detailed landscape buffers. We think this is an excellent OSC plan, and we think it's a great plan for this particular property, and we would respectfully request your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Kevin went over by just about thirty seconds, so we'll add that additional time to the opposition to let them take advantage of that. So let's hear from the opposition at this time. Who wants to be first? Somebody come on up. There you go.
I'm going to be short, because I know other people want to talk. I live in Brown's Farm.
Give us your name, please.
I'm sorry. Michael Mays, Kirk Mays.
Thank you, Michael.
I live across the street from the subdivision in Brown's Farm. What I think is proposed is, is not in keeping with what is currently the different communities that are there. We have, right now, we have, during the school time, you cannot get out of Brown's Farm easily. So we're going to be adding in some other houses that, as was shown, are coming out on Dew West, and that's going to make that just a mess. The other thing that I'm concerned about is there's going to be a, the way that the plot is proposed, there's going to be a very little separation between Mars Hill and where these people are coming out. So you're going to have back-to-back people coming out onto Hattaway, and I think that's also going to be a nightmare. Let's see. I guess the other thing, the real comment that I would have is, the report says that there's fourteen thousand seven hundred vehicles on Dew West, and currently, that road is having trouble supporting the traffic. And I'm just concerned with us trying to get out of our subdivision and with the, the traffic it's caused. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. I'm Dennis Kruzak. I live in Brookstone II subdivision. And I guess the point I would like to make is, I don't believe this meets the intent of the open space community. In a previous case, there was obviously old growth habitat to protect and streams. We're looking at an old farm pasture. The area that they're talking about protecting, the narrow strip along, yeah, that narrow strip is a kudzu patch. So it's really not open space. It's just going to be a kudzu patch that continues to spread. The other large chunk of open space is designated on the plat as their stormwater management, so obviously, they can't build there. It's going to be open anyway. You have to manage the stormwater. And I'm not quite sure why they're coming in at R-20. If you look at the numbers, seventy-two percent of those lots are less than fifteen thousand square feet, nine percent are less than ten thousand square feet. I know you can have any size lot in an open space community. It's just, almost looks like we're playing games. It's an R-20 when it doesn't even come close to an R-15. And I think that there's really nothing unique there to protect with an open space community designation. There's nothing, no natural resources there, there's nothing historical, nothing cultural. So it appears it's just a way to minimize lot size to maximize housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Next speaker, please. If any of you folks want to come up and just stand so you can move quickly to the podium, that'll be fine. You can do that.
Good morning. My name's Dave Browns from Brown's Farm. One of the bigger concerns that we have is we keep flip-flopping from R-30 to R-20. The other concern with Brown's Farm is when you look at Dew West Road, and you look at the accident history right on the road, right across from where Hattaway intersects with it, we're going to put an exit of, I believe it was twelve homes on the newest plot. I've seen several of them now, but the newest plot would be anywhere from seven to twelve homes. There's going to be one little road and an access point that comes out. One of the questions that we have is, assuming this goes through, if those homes have children and stuff, will the school buses actually stop on Dew West Road, or will they pull into the little drive that they're recommending? The garbage disposal and so forth. To give you an example, today, to come out on Dew West from Brown's Farm at 7:30 would have taken you about twenty-two minutes to get out on the road. It backs up almost all the way to the Red Rock entrance. So if they're wanting to do this, we would like to ask the county what they're going to do about the road situation and come, and so forth. Then, as we show, we've got an exit that comes on to Hattaway that's also extremely close to Dew West, which is going to route traffic that direction. What we didn't see was any kind of proposal of taking these homes that are aligned on the Dew West area and having some kind of exit that goes back into their own community, such as a bridge going over the wetland area and so forth, and using that area. Then to, to highlight the point that the gentleman was just up here earlier, the, the areas that they're zoning as open spaces and greenlands and everything, they have to be zoned as open spaces and greenland. They're basically trash areas that can't be built upon right now. So we would like it to be relooked at and looked at from an R-30 standpoint, and no homes coming out on the Dew West area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ron Scheibler. I'm a resident of Brown's Farm. The concern I have is the traffic on Dew West. It's already listed as having forty percent more cars per day than on Mars Hill, onto Dew West. And the stipulations were no access to Carter or Mars Hill, and I'm concerned as why that was not also included on Dew West Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next speaker, please.
My name is Valerie Rikes, and I live in Holland Woods off of, I'm at Holland Woods and Dew West, and I agree with everything they've said. But one of my particular concerns is that the watershed there, particularly in the lower area, thank you, is going to impact the West Hill subdivision, which, which is kind of that little triangular subdivision that's in there, that it does have a water reservoir for the, for the shed. But we live just below that on Holland Road, and that, that is a concern. And we're just wondering if that was going to be addressed before we get flooded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rikes. Do we have another speaker? Anyone else? I keep seeing people up and down, but they're not coming forward, so I think that's it. We'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion, and it'll be back to this board. This is in District One. That's handled by Mr. Gunther. We'll let him lead our discussion. Skip?
Okay. Before I get into a whole discussion, I have a couple of questions. I wonder if Kevin Moore, if you could come back just for a second? There you are. My question for you is, who is 825 Mars Hill LLC?
That is the, that is the owner.
Yeah. And who, what do they do? Who are they? What's their history?
Their history is, it's a individual who, and investors who have had real estate construction, real estate development experience across a broad spectrum, heavy emphasis on landscape and architecture. So that, that's who it is. It's just a, it's a single-purpose LLC that you see from time to time, but is it, in terms of who is it, it's not a name brand at this point in time.
Okay. So we don't have any access to, you know, what they may have built somewhere so we could see what the quality of construction is and so forth. We just have to kind of take it on face value that they're going to be good.
As far as their homes that they would build?
Yes, right.
Or the development that they would provide?
Well, both. The development and the...
They're not a home builder, so they would be partnering with a home builder.
Okay, so they're not a home builder.
That often depends on what you get entitled. You need to then partner with a home builder, because, so you don't put the car before the horse.
So the, the pictures of, of the example homes that are in the stipulation letter, what do those represent, then, if they're not a builder?
Those represent the pictures of the homes that would be built in this subdivision. What we, what we say is, those kind of homes, the homes that we've built in this subdivision would be substantially similar in their composition, their architecture, and so forth, so that you get a feel for that. Very seldom do you have the exact, sometimes you do, but in, in cases like this, what's happened often, what you want to do is make sure of what you're getting, and the pictures in the stipulation letter say, that's what these homes, the style and architecture will be. And then we further, further stipulated as to the materials that will be used, and the fact that you'll have a water table that goes around all four sides, so that you have that element of assurance and confidence that the quality of the homes will be there.
Okay. Then, one last question on that, in that regard. It's not clear to me from any of the, from the stip letter or the pictures, whether it's one-sided masonry and so forth that would be on the, these homes, or if it's three-sided or four-sided. What, what is the plan there? Because it's only a front-facing picture that I've seen, for the example homes that would go up.
It will be a mixture. If you want to, he can, I've got those set out here, I just, in case I needed to answer those questions, he can, just so everybody can know what we're talking about. You're going to have a mixture or a combination of materials that will be carried around. Like I said, the, the way that we've addressed that in the past is to make sure that you're, you can see some of the sides there contain siding or other elements of either brick or stone, there's board and batten, so that you have that attractive look that's not a rubber stamped look, but one that is very attractive. In this case, what we've done is said the water table or that aspect of the home, as it comes around, will be carried around, which is a brick or stone water table, will be carried around to all four sides.
Okay. Good. Those are my questions. Jane, Jane Strickland, I'd like to ask you to come up just for a second to talk about the traffic issues, before I get into the main thing that I want to talk about. And, and one of the, you know, there's the issue of traffic on Dew West and also on Mars Hill that's, you know, pretty significant. Their arteries, it's growing because of just the growth in that area out there. And also, there's been a suggestion that right there at the corner of Dew West and Hattaway, as you're going west on Dew West, and you want to make a right turn to go kind of northeast on Hattaway, that, that's, that's a pretty sharp turn. I, I'm just wondering if, and, and suggestion was made to maybe soften that, that corner. So could you talk about both those things? You know, the traffic in general, what the plans may be to alleviate some of the concerns the owners out there have, and then what specifically you might do with that corner right there?
Let me start with the corner. Oh, hi, I'm Jane Strickland with Cobb DOT. I'll start with the corner from Dew West. Something was suggested to me that I think I'd like to make a revision to my, to my recommendations, would be to add a right turn lane there, because that is, because you do have that skew of Hattaway Road and Dew West and the curve of Dew West, that it would pull car, vehicles off of Dew West and allow them to make that turn a little slower, because it does take a little more time because of the alignments. So...
Okay.
That was one recommendation that I thought was a good recommendation. In terms of the traffic in general, I've been taking notes to bring back to the office everyone's concerns that they've mentioned.
Okay. Good.
We could soften, we could have them during plan review soften that radius.
Right. Good. Does anybody have any questions of Jane before we move on? Okay, good. Thank you, Jane.
Right, thank you.
When, when I look at this, this whole area, it's, it's West Cobb, and it's right smack in the center of, of West Cobb. And everybody in West Cobb continues to talk about the reasons that they moved to West Cobb, or they live in West Cobb. They like the look and feel, the character of, of the area. It has a rural kind of a feel. And I think when you look at this piece of property, this contributes in a very significant way to that rural kind of feel, because it is rural. It's, it's, it's a, it's a couple of farm fields. And, and that's what you see as you drive up and down Mars Hill and Dew West and along Hattaway in that section right there. When, when I look at the neighborhoods around, you see some large R-30 properties that are well more than a couple acres for, with individual homes, and then you see a mixture of R-30 and R-20, and I, and I agree, RA5 down in that southeast corner of this, this area, and then the old PRD. So you see a fair amount of density. By allowing, and this is zoned R-30, and the future land use map, it's very low density residential, which allows for zero to two units per acre. So R-30 is typically 1.1 units per acre, and R-20 is typically 1.75 units per acre when it's, everything's all said and done with. So both of those designations fit within the very, VLDR, very low-density residential, future land use category. But, and there's a big but here, changing this, this is, this is one of the last major pieces of property out here that's undeveloped of, of any significant size. Changing this to R-20, which one could argue is consistent with a lot of the neighborhoods around there, still changing that to R-20 is going to significantly impact the traffic, the infrastructure, the look and feel, it's going to erode away the character in a significant way, I believe, of the, the rural feel that this area has. I think OSC probably, the OSC overlay probably makes sense, because there is some property in here that, parts, parts of this parcel that, you know, could be saved and would allow for, you know, some nice walking trails and so forth. But the R-20 part of this bothers me a lot. I'm leaning in the direction, I mean, there, there're just, there're lots of issues with stormwater management and, and lots of detailed kind of issues that are still sort of floating around, but I, I think that, I'm leaning in the direction of, of saying that I'd like to see this become an R-30 OSC subdivision that would help maintain, it would allow the owners to develop this the way it's zoned, R-30, but it would help to maintain look and feel and character of, of this area. I'm concerned about setbacks and buffers. When you look at the, the northwest corner of this property, there are two R-30 parcels adjacent to it, and the backlot ratio there is in the vicinity of five to one along one side. That's way too high. Five, five lots adjacent to one lot. There, the setbacks, I, I believe should be forty feet along an R-30 subdivision. I think that's what the code says, and I don't believe that the back setbacks are set that way. I think, you know, buffer that's around the rest of the property ought to be extended along those two parcels to the northwest, but those are details that need to be addressed in a redesign. But I, I'm leaning in the direction of saying, I believe that we need to redesign this as an R-30 OSC. I would welcome any discussion from, from the board, you know, from the, the commission on that subject, but I just think the density is, is just too high, and it's going to negatively impact the character of this area that we're trying to preserve.
Any comments? When we had our work session a few days ago, one of the first things that was raised is, why can't this be an R-30 OSC? I thought it could, and I, so I tend to agree with you, and I, if you make a motion like that, I would support it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Go on.
I'll add that as well, just, you know, I used to live in this general area, and I agree with the look and feel. I also think in that area, we've seen so much traffic and, and load on the infrastructure that, you know, bringing a much higher density than what it's already approved for would just create problems, you know, on the whole infrastructure.
Let me ask another question. Does this, does the current plan comply with the OSC requirements?
I think Phil can answer that, but the latest plan, I believe, yeah, go ahead, Phil. Why don't you answer that question? Because there's a little bit of concern, question about whether that really is the case.
The last report I saw from you said it does not. Is that still the case?
Philip Westbrook, Community Development. They submitted a revised plan Friday, and, or Thursday, I think, July 30th, and that one had the percentage of open space what they needed.
Okay.
So there are some smaller technicalities that need to be addressed from the plan on July, that's stamped dated July 30th, but as far as their percentage of open space, they did meet that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
One other, go ahead.
I think sometimes that we get hung up on the density in this particular case, because the property is, is like a farm, I think it would be a better presentation, sell quicker by an R-30 OSC, because it'll be laid out with the larger lots. Also, just for some information, Brown's Farm is zoned R-20, so, you know, one could say that this ought to be R-20, but because of the nature of the, and so many roads surrounding it, I think it would be better served as a R-30 OSC, and I think that you could save much more green space. And I think they need to get with Phil and see what an OSC R-30 would look like, but I think it would look really well on this track plan.
Skip, are you thinking in terms of, of holding this?
Yes.
And asking for a plan to come back?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of holding this for a month, allowing the applicant to go back and design an R-30 OSC subdivision on this property. And one additional point that I failed to make before, but I made it in one of the previous cases, an OSC subdivision, right in the, in the, in the ordinance, it says that the larger lots, since you're talking about having a similar number of lots on a, on a piece of property that the underlying zoning would allow, OSC puts open space aside, so that implies that the lot size in an OSC development is going to have to be smaller on average. So you're going to have smaller lots, in this case, R-30 would require 30,000 square foot lots, you would have something significantly less than that for some of the lots. The OSC ordinance says, take those smaller lots and do everything you can to move them into the interior and keep the larger lots on the exterior, so that as you drive by a subdivision like this, you're going to see something that's similar to what's around it, with the interior being where you have the smaller lots. This, the current design has an awful lot of lots that are small, that are right on the edges, and so that's something that would need to be rectified too. So anyway, having said that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, go ahead, Skip.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we hold application Z-66 until our next hearing, to allow the applicant to go back and to incorporate all of the comments that have been written in the staff analysis and have been discussed today into a new design. That's my, that's my motion.
We have a motion of second by Ms. Williams, any further discussion or comments? Not hearing, seeing any, call for the vote. So that's what we're going to do then, we'll hold this and hear it again in 30 days and hopefully see a revised plan that works a little better. Thank you, folks. John, what's next, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Res zoning case Z-71, Polte Home Corporation requests rezoning from O-N-I, R-20, and NS to RM8 for the purpose of a tax residential in landlot 924 and 937 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Terrell Mill Road across from Brookview Drive. The applicant represents present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-71? Please raise your hands.
Okay, we see up and down hands, we need to get an accurate count, if you're opposed to Z-71, let's do that again, Z-71 opposed, can I get your hands up, please? Okay, thank you, folks.
Left to record show there are five people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, thank you, folks, James, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, and members of the, of the commission, my name is James Bally for the record, and I'm here today on behalf of Polte Homes, and the application you have before you, Z-71, is a application to go from O-N-I commercial to the residential category now of RA-6. The property that you see on the overhead is the light colored O-N-I with the two arrows pointed toward it, it is, on one side you have what people call the micro center, shopping center, that, that is CRC, and then general commercial. Part of the property is located in a community activity center and zoned NS, and across the road from it there is a parcel also zoned O-N-I, and it also has, directly across from the road leading out of Brookview, which is Terrell Mill Estates. Site plan you see before you today is a site plan that has 51 units on it, the homes that are going to be located on the property are 2,500 square feet with, and up, with two-car garages. There's going to be four-sided architecture with a mixture of brick, stacked stone, and combinations of, of various accents. All of the units will have superior interior finishes and design options. The sales prices of these homes are going to be in the upper 300,000s and into the 400,000s. The exact product and bindings right now has an average sale price of $385,000 per home. Staff has recommended approval for 52 homes, we are now at 51 on this plan, they've also recommended RA-6 designation instead of the RM8, and we accept that recommendation. What you see before you now is some examples of the quality, homes are going to be offered again in the upper 300,000s, the superior interiors, many different design options, as we'll go through these fairly quickly, but you can see the range of options that each homeowner has when they come into the development. Again, another example of some of the architecture. I don't want to get into all of the floor plans, but did want to briefly address the fact that we have a variety of those, and one of those includes a master on the main option, we think that is key for those buyers who would like to have their bedroom on the first floor, that is going to be an option in this community. I'm going to talk briefly about the stipulation letter, it's lengthy, so I'm, I'm not going to go into everything here, but I do want to make mention that in the letter submitted timely on Wednesday, I neglected to include that they are going to construct a wrought iron style fence along the entire road frontage with Terrell Mill Road with brick columns approximately 1,250 feet of that. We're going to have a mandatory HOA that's going to be responsible for maintaining the landscaping in the entrance, and there's going to be significant landscaping along, again, the entire frontage of Terrell Mill Road, the ground-based monument style sign. We've got a landscape plan that's going to be approved by the county arborist, members of the Terrell Mill Community Association will be on that committee, and I appreciate their work on this application. We do have a required buffer, the cobblestone walk, which is the townhomes directly above this site, would not ask for variance for the required buffer, even though it could possibly be argued that their zoning of SC is more restricted than RA-6, or is less restrictive. The elevations you have before you today show all four sides, so you can see what the architecture is going to be, and we've stipulated that, so you can enforce them. There's other protections that have been filed, again, in the letter dated July 29, 2015. This, this property is located within the area that's included in the Powers Ferry Master Plan, and we think our plan is consistent with many of its designs and goals very quickly. The site is located and identified in the plan as one that is proposed for future changes, and we think Z-71 is consistent with that. The pla, the plan states that it, there's a desire to move from multi-family rental units to homeownership, Z-71 does that, these are all four cell homes with a 10% lease restriction on them. The plan has a desire for development of a unique and vibrant pedestrian-friendly village. We, Z-71 does that, as we've agreed install sidewalks along the entire frontage, again, 1,250 feet of that. There's also a statement in the plan, it wants to improve the landscaping, lighting, signage, have underground utilities and building design to increase the value to the community. We think Z-71 will do that with the intense landscaping, the ground-based monument sign, all of the underground utilities, including the stormwater, and price points again in the upper 300,000s to 400,000. Stormwater improvement, we've got to talk about a couple of these issues, and I want to hit on those, we are going to improve the stormwater condition on the site now, there is no detention whatsoever on the site, and so the number one thing is, with this change in zoning, we reduce the allowed impervious coverage from 70% under the current zoning to 45% on the site. The engineering and installing of this underground detention, which is over detaining, is 400,000 and up, a significant cost that Polte is contin, willing to do to help the community. They're also requiring us, and we've agreed to engineer the stormwater to control it the next more frequent flood event. If you have 100 release, we've got to design it out of 50, and so on, we think that's going to help the, the problems out there. We're also requiring to do a new conveyance system of the faulty system from the micro center across into Terrell Mill Estates, that's in addition to the 400,000 or so for the underground detention. And while we can't fix all the problems, we think we're giving a very significant contribution to that, and again, you can see the two arrows is where it flows across into Terrell Mill, and we think our engineering will fix that. Traffic analysis, now this was the number one concern that I heard from the members of the community, and the entrance does align with the entrance of Brookview. Polte does not own the right of way, it may need to be widened on Brookview Road, but we will support that. We've asked Cobb DOT, there's questions about a traffic signal, we're 350 homes short of that, when you add the homes that need, would need to be included in that, Z-71's about 8.3% of the homes that would need to be present to require a light there or allow a light there, we're agreeing to participate in that with a defined time limit and a pro-rata share, which of course would be fair based on the percentage of our, our development. We're going to do improvements to Terrell Mill Road, which included deceleration lane and a left turn lane. I want to focus real briefly, there's the, we do have less traffic than the Shriner Academy, which was on this site, 200 AM, 200 PM cars, we, a lot of those cars were not residents that live in the area, so they were coming into the area, creating traffic, leaving it, we're going to be 50% of that traffic, and these are going to be, of course, people living there that won't have to come into the area and otherwise congest it. We've agreed to do an updated traffic study after zoning during plan review for DOT to look at, we've also asked for an option to have an exit only toward the south of the property on the plan, if engineering allows it and determines that's feasible during plan review. I want to touch on the elevated landscaping plan, what you see there, again, an indication of the wrought iron style fencing with the monument style sign, you have intense landscaping coded out there on the front, again, we're going to agree to put the TMCA member on the landscape committee and going along the entire frontage of Terrell Mill Road. I want to briefly talk about something that's come up, about the rear elevation, this is the rear elevation that we've agreed to do on all the homes facing Turner Mill, it has a mixture of brick, some sides are all brick, some are not, there is a mixture there, it costs about an extra $10,000 to put that on, the backs, as opposed to what you may see in others, and we think that avoids the all institutional look of just solid brick homes facing the back, again, on the other side of that landscaping. And now, I may ask for a couple extra minutes, I'm, I'm trying to get through this thing as close to 10 as I can, but there's been some concerns, or comments about whether or not this site would hurt the value of the townhomes that are located to the north. We think this is a better product than, than that development, and we've got an average floor price, we have two stories of about 190,000 a floor. Now, the picture you see there is what you see from Terrell Mill Road, you see the siding facing you, not intense landscaping, sales price in that neighborhood, 243K to 344K, there's a range, only three sales over 300K in the last seven years, and when you look at an average floor price, again, these are three-story homes, you're looking at a liberal estimate of, of 100,000 a floor. Their zone, suburban condominium, you see there, the sidewalk does not extend along their frontage, some of the landscaping that was described is, you can see there as bamboo. When we really got to looking at it and setting the value, we begin to have some concerns, because as you saw in that other picture, it appears as if all of their sides are merely side, siding, and when you look at the front of them, they're really what we would all call one-sided architecture, because only the front are, are done that way, I went back and looked at the steps, and it, it was required to be more than one-sided architecture, and we're not saying code enforcement needs to go out there, but that's certainly something to look at when you're comparing our project to theirs. And what you see there is a side view from our property line, there you can see the backs of these units are also siding, there with that age chain link fence is, is the property line. You've got, there's a view from directly what our homes would be looking at, again, they, they're taller than us by a floor, so they'd really be looking down into us, you know, there's some disrepair back there that, that probably could stand to be addressed. But when I went back and looked at the, at the steps, there's the minimal buffer here, they're required to have 25 feet to 40 feet, RA-6 requires us to have 10 feet, so if, if they've got the buffer they're supposed to have, they would have no less than 35 feet of landscape buffer. So at the end of that comparison, and, and when you look at some of the homes in the neighborhood, excuse me, Polte has better homes, they're higher value, and we would respectfully ask that you follow staff's recommendation for approval, they've said 52, we've now got 51, and we would ask for approval of that number. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, James. James went over by about two and a half minutes, so we're going to give that extra time to the opposition when they speak. Let's hear from the opposition at this time, please.
Hello, my name is Sherri George, I'm vice president of the Terrell Mill Community Association, which represents residents and businesses in the Terrell Mill Powers Ferry area. TMCA does not oppose the townhome development, as we consider it one of the village pieces of the puzzle that fits into the heart of the Powers Ferry Master Plan, but we do have concerns. TMCA has communicated and listened to our community through Facebook, our website, terrellmill.com, and a community meeting held at Brumby Elementary last Monday, where Mr. Bally and Mr. Bear of Polte Group gave a presentation and answered many questions from the community, and we thank them for agreeing to that meeting. The overwhelming concern about, was about traffic, due to the increased traffic from the 51 units, traffic from New Brumby Elementary and the East Side Middle School, just when they're completed, and having helped us with the construction of everything, including the traffic backups from the Marietta Water Department project of the 52-inch water main, that goes down the whole length of Terrell Mill Road. The most important concern to TMCA is the safety of our 200 neighbors who live in Terrell Mill Estates and Woodruff Plantation, as well as the future townhome neighbors. The entrance to the proposed townhome subdivision is aligned with the entrance into Terrell Mill Estates, which is not currently done that way, and so they'll go head to head trying to get into their neighborhoods and out of their neighborhoods, which is already very dangerous for them, and any visitors that come and visit them to the neighborhood. We had heard, and he reiterated, that Cobb DOT has stated the intersection does not warrant a traffic light, but TMCA would like to request a safe solution presented to the community before the final vote of the BOC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherri, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
My name is Bruce Levitt. I live in Terrell Mill Estates, which Sherri just mentioned. I'm on the board of the Homeowners Association there. We are directly across from the entrance of Z-71, which is Brookview. Brookview Road is the only entry and exit for the one hundred and sixty homes in Terrell Mill Estates and the forty homes that are back in Woodruff Plantation. The condos will put basically two hundred and fifty-one homes at that intersection. This is Brookview at Terrell Mill now. You'll pardon my little drawings on the Google Maps. This is our, two cars, one car trying to get out of Brookview, the other trying to get off of Terrell Mill into Brookview. This is very fast-moving traffic at rush hour. The other times of the day are really not a big problem. It's fast-moving, and part of the problem is Brookview is in the middle between Powers Ferry and the Delk intersection. So the traffic really picks up speed. They accelerate to get past those intersections. And there is a big dip in the road coming down the hill on Terrell Mill. It's a very poor sightline. So when you add across the street now, where there's never, ever been a road, it's hard enough to get out as it is now. We do it. You add an entrance on the other side, here's a car trying to get out and a car trying to turn in. The potential is there for bumper cars. It's very, very scary to get out and think that you're essentially, each side is going to have to look at traffic from three different directions. The normal two lanes, two directions on Terrell Mill, plus looking across at the cars that might want to be coming into the very same space. The median, it's very narrow there. You can't even stop in the middle for your full car width. You have to be angled and worried about getting your tail of the car hit or the front of the car hit. So it's really not traffic volume, it's the very, it's just the simple nature of this particular intersection. Rush hour risk will multiply for all the drivers, not just the Brookview users or the condo drivers, also the people on Terrell Mill who now have this big mess to deal with. We would like to urge you to please accept the second exit that Pulte has requested in that, that would really help relieve traffic on their side of Brookview with a lot of people simply sliding out and going right. Please do whatever it takes. We know the traffic is, you know, it's a universal problem. We don't know what the right solution is. We know a light is difficult, but we just want you to urge that the DOT really look at, very hard at solutions. Terrell Mill itself, the whole thing is being redone with all the work, the schools, the projects. It's a good time to address some of these big issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mitch Littman. I have an interest in a small office building directly across the street from the proposed site, and my main concern and the reason why I'm here is to just try to offer a little input into a very real problem that's been occurring more frequently recently, especially with the torrential rains that we've been having, but actually it doesn't even take that anymore, and that is the stormwater runoff from this site. This area, which was at a school, a day school, Shriner School, was developed over pretty years without any thought given to how to retain the stormwater. I am not, I have some photographs here if you care to look at them, and would demonstrate one of my concerns. Very frequently after it rains, great deal, Terrell Mill Road becomes flooded, and it's quite dangerous. I've actually witnessed cars sliding right off because of the road into trees and what have you. Emergency equipment has been called out. For some reason, the DOT or Cobb County doesn't seem to be too concerned about that because it's an ongoing problem. The other thing is that the stormwater that runs off, I don't know what anybody was thinking about, the road was redone a few years ago, and two large culverts were put under the road to carry the water off underneath the road, and it wound up on my property. So, and washed out my parking lot several times. So my concern is, yes, Pulte has said that they would address this problem. I'm not so sure that their solution would mitigate this problem. So I would ask the board and the stormwater people to look into this very closely to see if this really would solve the, not solve the problem, but at least make it a lot less severe. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitch. Next speaker, please.
That's the flooding that occurs on the other side.
Good morning. My name is Calder Erman. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association for the adjacent community Cobblestone Walk, and I do want to clarify from the very beginning that I, we had a meeting of the association Sunday night, and my job was not to oppose or be in favor of the project, it was to come and get information and raise some concerns. So I do want to clarify that at the outset. I do want to clarify something Mr. Bailey said. He indicated a minute ago, he put up a slide that indicated there have been only three sales over three hundred thousand over the last seven years in our community. That is simply incorrect, Mr. Bailey. I don't know where you came by that information. We've had five properties sell in our community since December first of last year. I believe they've averaged between three hundred fifty and three hundred sixty thousand dollars, but we can, I can get clarity on that point, so I just want to clarify that. On behalf of the community, I believe we have four concerns. The first is the buffer. Obviously, we would like to have input into how that buffer is utilized. This morning, I received an email from Mr. Bailey that suggested it would be an intensive buffer. I don't know what that means, but my home looks directly into that intensive buffer, and so I'd like to understand that and have input, hopefully. Also, when we received the mailer two weeks ago, the initial mailer, our first notification of this, it referred to the property being zoned as an RM eight. That's what the sign says in front of the property right now. Last Thursday, I received an email from Mr. Bailey that referred to an RA six. It looks like the RA six is six units as opposed to eight, and the property has fifty-one. It's seven point seven nine acres, so it looks like there's more units in the property than are allowed under the zoning, and I didn't see a variance. So I just, I don't know how, I don't understand that part of it. It looks like there are more units in there than it's zoned for. The green space usage, I asked Mr. Bailey about it. My home looks directly in the green space, and I'd just like to have a conversation about what that green space would look like. And then finally, the building times. They've asked to build until eight o'clock. I have an eighteen-month-old. I mean, I'd like them to not be building. That's just my own personal comment. But I also was unaware of the Terrell Mill community who spoke at the outset of our time here. I was just handed a four-page document from the Terrell Mill Community Association with their thoughts and input, and I know that we'd like to have a conversation afterwards as well. So my purpose today is just to gather information and take that information back to my community for another meeting in the near future, and so I wanted to come and speak and give this information.
Okay. Thank you, Carl, very much. Debbie, does the time reflected, is the two minutes included, the extra two minutes?
Not yet.
It hasn't? Okay. So we still have some additional time. Is there another speaker?
I'm sorry, can I just make one more?
Oh, sure. You have time. Go ahead.
A couple of gentlemen came from our neighborhood as well, and I want to thank them for coming today and being a part of this discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z-71? Okay, not seeing and hearing any, we'll close the public portion. This is in District Two, that's my district, so I'll lead the discussion on this. Thanks very much to all the neighbors that have been so engaged with this particular zoning request. I've heard from many of you, I've talked to a few of you. If you're not, you're probably not aware, you had a meeting at Brumby School, Brumby Elementary, just about a week ago. I was there. I slipped in late, sat in the back, didn't say anything, and then got up and left before any of you could surround me. I don't typically go to those things, but I did really want to hear what comments were being made and how Mr. Bailey addressed those issues. And it was a great meeting, and I really appreciated all of the comments that were made, and I learned an awful lot by listening to you. I am really familiar with this site. My grandchildren went to Shriner Academy for some time, and I've been on that property many times. I was out there last week walking around, and it's a big site. It's about eight acres roughly, and some of the buildings frankly look like they could be cleaned up and utilized today. It's a nice site, so it's a site that I'm very familiar with. What I heard at the meeting and the emails that I've been getting from many of you indicate that there really are, there are many issues, but there really are three that everyone brings up, everyone, and we heard them mentioned here this morning. Traffic, of course, is paramount, and that relates to safety and security and being able to get in and out of your neighborhood safely. Stormwater, yeah, that's a biggie. I want to address that, and we'll talk about that one first. And then just the appearance, a number of people were very concerned how these units are going to look if it's approved by BOC, how they're going to look from Terrell Mill Road. They really want to protect their home values. People that live here want to know that they're going to have a quality product that looks right. Sherri mentioned the village look. That was something that came out of the Powers Ferry master plan, and it clearly says, whatever we build in this site has to fit the neighborhood. It has to look right, it has to perform. So those were the three things that I picked up from the meeting at Brumby and from the emails that, the many emails that I got, and I thank you all for that. Why don't we start with stormwater? Dave, you want to come up, and we'll address the runoff issue that I'm very aware exists.
Yes, sir. Dave Brayden with the Stormwater Management Division.
What, tell us if you will, what is the existing and current condition on the site related to stormwater runoff? I keep hearing complaints, we see the pictures that were shown to us this morning. Why is that? What's causing that?
Well, this is an old part of Cobb County, obviously, that was developed quite a number of years ago when there were, there were stormwater requirements, but they were not anywhere near what they are currently. The pond there for that huge commercial center, that we refer to as the microcenter, you know, it's probably sized for a fifty-year event, which doesn't come anywhere close to what we would require today. The Shriner site has no detention whatsoever, so all of that impervious parking and buildings is not detained at all. So that's the reason we see problems there under Terrell Mill. It was mentioned that DOT hasn't done any, or stormwater hasn't done anything for the periodic overtopping of the, not overtopping the road, but if the water does get out into the road. The problem is that is you can go in and put a larger culvert in there to get rid of that overtopping, but that takes all that runoff and just sends it right down to the commercial, to the office building that already has problems. So we typically do not want either stormwater or DOT want to get into that situation. So that's why, a little bit excited about the opportunity now to provide detention for this whole area that has none already. So, but even, but I believe that our current standards would not go far enough in that regard to provide significant reduction. So that's why my comments reflect additional reduction to the next storm down, which Mr. Bailey had already mentioned. I believe his stip letter also mentions a reduction to a hundred, basically providing a hundred twenty percent, another additional twenty percent. Usually that going to the next storm winds up being about that, but whichever one provides the greater one is the one that will apply at plan review. So, and then again, they also have to provide conveyance for that system from the commercial center, the microcenter, commercial center through their site. So I do believe that the additional requirements that we're providing will go a long way to mitigating what's happening downstream. Now, the, solve it completely, you have to install a large system through that whole office park. It's private, and it would be expensive and disruptive to, it's only one way in, it'd be very disruptive to their system. So I believe over detaining on the site is going to be the best way to, the best way to deal with that.
Maybe a little off-topic, but not really. The microcenter and that entire complex up there seems to be a bigger culprit, and the fact that we're going to have less impervious coverage with Pulte than we currently had with the Shriner site.
That's right.
But we do have a detention pond, if you will, a facility that should take care of some of that runoff from the microcenter site?
It does. It does. And part of the problem has been that they haven't been very good about, or in the past, I will say, there's been a lot of debris in that pond that has clogged up that alley control structure, which makes it overtop more frequently. And I believe they've been able to, I think we've been able to stay on top of them enough to keep debris and shopping carts and things getting thrown in.
When was it cleaned out last, do you know?
That I do not know. I'd have to check with our maintenance.
What control do we have over that? Can we make them go in and maintain, and or does the county have to do that?
No, it's private. It would have to be their, it would be their responsibility to maintain it. We can go in and inspect it and say, these are some deficiencies that need to be corrected, and that has been done previously, yes.
Okay. Well, okay, that answers that.
And we will continue to do that.
Okay. I'm going to ask James to comment on this as well. So the ponding on Terrell Mill, the runoff that goes down into the neighborhood, a lot of that comes from the microcenter. Some of that will be mitigated, and we're going to ask them at plan review to mitigate as much of that as they can. And James, I'll get you to comment on it just a minute. I want to get Jane up next, but you can stay if you like. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for David?
Let me make one more comment. Our development standards require us, when new development comes in, to take that site back to, not to control the flow to the existing site condition. We take it back to the, to undeveloped condition when it was fully wooded. So that's the starting base for the allowable discharge, and they're going to be doing twenty to twenty-five percent below that. So I just want to make it clear that it's a substantial cost, and a substantial amount of storage is going to have to be provided on the site, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. What I'm hearing is we're going to see some tremendous improvement on the stormwater runoff scene. Jane, why don't you come up? Let's talk a little bit about traffic.
Good morning. I'm Jane Sturkle with DOT.
Good morning. We heard Mr. Bailey mention, and we heard a request from some of the folks here about a traffic light at that new intersection that Pulte hopes to create. We heard James say that that's probably not going to happen. What's the process for getting a traffic light approved for that site?
First of all, it would have to meet one of the signal warrants, which is a federal standard.
So a warrant is a study?
Yes.
And when is that typically done?
It generally takes place after build-out because we want to know what the traffic pattern is.
But knowing what we know now and seeing the plan that's being proposed to us, a traffic light is probably not going to be warranted for that site.
No. What we did was, there's, Institute of Traffic Engineers has a book that they have a trip generation manual that gives you kind of what they've done. It's they've studied similar developments and have given how many trips per day each unit would be, and so we kind of backed into it, and it looked like we would need three hundred and fifty units to meet the, to meet a signal warrant.
Okay. We heard some, one of the, hm?
Additional.
Right. Additional units, that's correct. We heard someone who gave testimony earlier talk about entry alignment. DOT requires them to align with Brookview, correct?
It is our preference for them to align. Otherwise, it would have to be offset by a hundred and twenty-five feet, but we wouldn't grant another median opening.
Okay. So really, that's really what they have to do, is align with Brookview?
Yes, sir.
That's what you're saying?
That's our preference.
I had a lady even ask me, why don't we just put a stop sign there? I'm not sure that's an answer, right in the middle of busy Terrell Mill Road, but I don't think that would work at all. What about this second, I call it an exit because we don't want it to be an interest, at the southern end of this site, closest to Powers Ferry, I suggested, and I even talked to you about, what about if they want to put an exit there to take some of the traffic away from the main entrance and exit and put it there, especially for the mornings, people going to work and needing to get to Powers Ferry? Would DOT be okay with that?
We'd be willing to consider it, yes.
Would you think if that is approved, if you look at it and approve it, would that need to be right out or right in, right out only, or what would you think?
Ideally, I would say a right out only.
Okay.
It could be a right in, right out. I mean, they have enough frontage to meet a second entrance.
I really see that as a part of the solution to this traffic control, especially in the mornings, people that are going to be going out of this new, newly-created subdivision and trying to get up to Powers Ferry, rather than go through the busy intersection across from Brookview, they could come there and make a quick right turn, and they're right there. I think that's an excellent thing, and James even said, Pulte would absolutely consider doing that if DOT approved. So I'm going to request that you guys really take a look at that at plan review. I think that might be a solution to at least some of our traffic issues. I like that idea. I'm not an engineer, you are, so if you and the folks would take a good, hard look at that.
Absolutely.
What else is, are you recommending that Pulte do to help with the traffic flow at that intersection?
We're requesting or recommending a deceleration lane for the entrance.
A left turn lane and a decel lane?
Yes, sir.
Both there. Is there any consideration being given to any improvements across the street? You're talking about doing things on their side of the property. What about across the street? What about across the street at Brookview?
We've been asked to look at widening Brookview, so that there's a three-lane section. You would have two lanes out, one lane in. And one thing we'll have to look at is, is there enough right-of-way for that?
Okay, so that's, that will be considered, will that be also considered at Plan Review or before? I want to ask James to address that as well. He just alluded to that, he didn't give us much indication of what Polte might be willing to do, but I think that's going to have to be looked at. If improvements could be made to the Brookview side of the road and Polte will share in that expense, I think that's a good thing. Okay, so y'all, y'all will be looking at that. Go ahead.
It just strikes me that when you, when you look at that Brookview Road right there and then another road adjacent to it, the combination of the traffic trying to cross each other could be pretty horrendous, as was pointed out by one of the people. Would an alternative be to just take away that median break so that it's right in, right out on both sides of the road right there? Because I look at this parcel, and it's sort of in a, you don't have to go very far before you could get to wherever you want to go, by going around Powers Ferry and, you know, up to, you know, the Delk Road intersection. There's, you know, if you had a right in, right out on both sides of the road with no median opening right there, what would that, would that solve the problems too?
My guess is you'd have a lot of people that come out on Brookview and are used to turning left to go to Powers Ferry, would not, would, they would change it totally. I'm not sure they would like that. I don't think I like it, because they've got to go all the way up to that next big intersection, turn left on Delk, go down to Powers Ferry, turn left on Powers Ferry to get back down to this intersection. What a roundabout way to get to Powers Ferry.
That's an idea.
I think, I know, it's, I appreciate the thought. I don't know that I would support that. Jane, do you have a thought on that, closing the median altogether? I know we caught you cold on this one, but...
Honestly, you did. I believe that the signals at Delk and Powers Ferry do create enough of a gap that folks can get out, make a left off of Brookview onto Terrell Mill.
Okay.
I'm thinking that when we, when we installed the medians on Terrell Mill, that we created that opening for a reason. And we can, we can study it, but ideally, I prefer the median opening to remain.
Well, it's something to talk about when you do get together with their engineers. It's something I hadn't thought about. You're requesting curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the full 1,250 feet frontage on Terrell Mill, so that's, that's something that Polte is willing to take care of as well. And will that median that currently exists there, is there any changes to be made to that? Are they moving it, widening it, anything in the middle of the road there that's going to help?
Well, they'll have to carve out enough space for the left turn lane. We'll also, we've asked them to look at, verify the intersection site distance. Right now, U-turns aren't allowed there.
Okay, but that median might be enlarged somewhat to accommodate?
I'd have to...
Don't know?
Look at the plan. That'll be handled during Plan Review.
Okay, because I thought I heard someone say that Polte was willing to help with that cost as well. That wouldn't be much, in fact, and might be a big help as traffic flows through there. Okay, any other questions for Jane? Okay, thank you, Jane, very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Bailey, now it's your turn, come on up. Where do you want to start? Stormwater? We really want you to overdetain this site. I think you hear that loud and clear, and I think that you're going to be asked to do that, so tell us how you can do that. We're talking underground storage?
Well, first of all, yeah, we think that in compliance with Powers Ferry master plan, they want all utilities, including stormwater utilities, underground. So we've agreed to do that, and you heard what Mr. Brayden has said about the overdetention that is going to have to occur on the site. We're in full agreement with that, we put it in our stip letter. We're going to do that. In addition to that, which I've said is a little bit over 400,000, we're going to have to fix that conveyance system out of, out of the microcenter. And we've agreed to do that in our stip letter as well. Kind of from a historical perspective, there was a lawsuit that was involved with the microcenter, and the property owners filed the suit, won the suit. The county, for whatever reason, refused to rezone it, and so the judge got mad and just said, all right, no zoning applies to it. And so for years, you would see signs out there, you know, per court order, no zoning requirements. Well, when you have stormwater controls and other things included within the zoning code, I think that led to a lot of the problems there, and we think we can fix a lot of it, not all of it, you know, but certainly, certainly be a great improvement.
You and I have talked a lot about landscaping. I know you've discussed it with the folks in the neighborhood. Well, the landscaping that you're proposing for the long 1,250-foot frontage of Terrell Mill, is that going to hinder or help the stormwater? Because I asked you about planning, putting a planted berm there, is that going to, what's that going to do to stormwater?
We do have a significant slope there, and so we need to look at that. We're going to have elevated and mature landscaping, which will involve, you know, the Turner Mill Group. We're happy to include Cobblestone Walk in that discussion. But we think doing it underground, we're going to be able to do the landscaping as planned and stipulated, which we wouldn't be able to do if we had to do, if we did an above-ground detention. And again, you know, we weren't required to do the underground detention, but Polte's willing to do that, they want to be a good neighbor, and they want to help that problem out there.
Let's talk a little bit more about landscaping. We had a fellow speak from Cobblestone Walk, which is the townhomes to the north there.
Right.
I think those are lovely townhomes. I've got out, I've drove up in there, parked, and got out and actually walked around and looked. I think it's a beautiful area. I understand that they would want to be sure that their values and rights are protected. Tell us what you plan to do on that strip behind Polte and Cobblestone.
Well, we've not asked for any variance from the code, and they've got certain requirements in there, six feet tall, planting and various things. We're not asking for a variance to that, and we're agreeing to do the landscaping. Again, though, what we're dealing with is a three-story structure looking in to our two-story, so we're going to want to do a significant landscaping there, and we're happy to include him on the landscaping committee.
I think you might want to do that, that's a good idea.
If that would be his request, we certainly would do that, and not have a problem with doing that at all. But, you know, they've got, depends on who's interpreting the code at the time maybe, but they've got to have a 25 or a 40, depending on, at least a 25, which is why I was starting to get into the conversation, which is more restrictive. We've only have to have a 10. So with their required 25 and our 10, it's 35.
What's your setback there currently?
20.
On the plan? So you have 20 feet there?
Yes.
That you could plant?
Well, you know, you've got the back decks that all like to come out from those, but we, we're going to, we've said that we would not do less than the 10, and we would like to incorporate various plantings in that other 10 feet. It wouldn't be an undisturbed, you know, buffer, because people have got to have, you know, their little back decks there, which are on the, on the ones at Cobblestone as well, but...
Okay, let's talk about, let's talk about Terrell Mill just for a minute. You and I have discussed, and I've told you what I would like to see and what I envision along Terrell Mill. You've got your curb, gutter, and sidewalk. Behind that, some grassy area, and then brick columns, piers, if you will, probably eight to 10 feet on center with a faux wrought iron fencing between, very attractive, I've seen that, and very attractive. And then I asked for a planted berm behind that.
Right.
Is that doable?
Yeah, that's where the landscape is going to be. With the slope, it's about two to one there, once we get the stormwater in, you know, we're not talking about a six-foot-tall berm, it's going to be elevated to some extent in there, and then have the intense landscaping designed to block the view of any of the homes that back up. Of course, that'll be subject to review by the county, and we just can't go out there. I do think it's a significant thing, and we're stipulating this in the HOA documents, we've got to maintain that. That's a, it's an important buffer. You see some HOAs that come in and their buffers are planted, five or six trees die, and nobody does anything. We're agreeing to make, to maintain that buffer as part of the HOA.
Will it be irrigated?
It will be.
So it will be irrigated. There are currently, I believe, three entrances that Shriner had and exits, and some of those are very problematic. What's the intent of Polte? Will they leave those open during construction? How quick will they close them, so forth?
We certainly, we would select one probably for a construction entrance, but I think there was a little bit of maybe Saturday morning bulldozing going down out there that got a couple of those that might not be proper entrances, but they're all going to be closed and just the approved entrance there. We've agreed to the construction hours that are typical, and we're not going to be utilizing all of those, there'd be no need to do that.
Well, I did walk the site last week, and as I said, I've been out there many times. I know that there are four, maybe six, mature trees on the northern side of the property close to the street, not really in the construction zone area. I'd love to see those saved, is just a chance to save those trees?
Well, you know, we always like to do that if we can. The problem with some large mature trees is their drip line is so huge. And I was frank with Sherry and others at that meeting that we attended, that a large majority of those simply cannot be saved in order to engineer the underground stormwater, that's got to be extra sized, and to implement that landscape buffer that you want along Terrell Mill. So we're certainly going to look at that. We don't want to get in a situation where we promise a tree and we can't, we're going to look at that. But, but the overall concern that I heard from the neighborhood was that landscaping in the front of it, so if we've got to pick between one of the two, we're going to do that. I think it makes sense when you've got a, you know, a mature tree with the first 35 feet with no leaves or anything, that, I mean, that provide any kind of screening or otherwise. Now, of course, they do have a tree ordinance, so we're going to have to replant trees and to compensate for that, and we certainly have an ask for that.
I don't mean to be rude, but those kind of comments generally mean you'd like to knock them down and just go on, and I'm just like to ask you to do your best to save them, and we'll, we'll put something in the, in the stip letters. Let's see, traffic study, have we done a study yet?
We've got a preliminary one done that confirmed what, we're mainly looking at whether the traffic signal will be warranted. It confirms what Jane has said. We're agreeing to do, though, I think you heard she wanted to get updated traffic studies. We've agreed to do one and to submit it to Cobb County DOT during the Plan Review process so they can evaluate and update accounts and everything that they would like to look at, then utilize that to make those decisions we were talking about earlier. So yes, there will be one submitted, an updated one that incorporates updated counts. You know, it's a little bit hard to go out and get an accurate analysis when school's out, you know, so we need to do one that incorporates all of that traffic.
Okay. Would Polte be open to helping with the cost of any improvements to the Brookside side of Terrell Mill?
We run into a little bit of problem when we don't have the ability to do the right-of-way, but yes, that's something we're looking at. We anticipate a focused revised stipulated, stipulation letter before the BOC meeting that would address that. We've got to have further conversations with DOT on how much right-of-way they've got, what can they do, but it's certainly something that we're willing to look at.
And the second exit at the southern end?
Yeah, we want to have that option. Now, you know, I was glad to hear some of those comments this morning. We want to have that option. Again, we're going to have to make the decision as to whether it's allowed during the Plan Review process, but we certainly want to keep that option, and that's why I put in the stip later, that if, I would ask that you approve that, and provided we can meet other things involved in the engineering process.
Yeah, I'd love to see that happen. How about a timeline? I got an email late last night from a lady who lives out there. She really wants to know, when will you begin and how long will it take to accomplish the build?
We're talking about, you know, probably the fall of 2016. Project would start before then. We would hope that the build-out would be toward the end of 16 and certainly the beginning of 17 to have it all done. Now, we sit here today and say that, and again, we've got those, you know, intense engineering issues, so we'd like to get started as soon as possible to make sure we keep it up. But Polte wants to put it up as quick as it can so it can recoup all of the costs that are going to have to go into this site to remedy some of the problems.
This is the third Polte case we've heard in the last few months, so they have a lot going on in Cobb County, and I understand there's some others coming down the pike, so I know they have a lot going on. One last question, will these units be sprinkled? Will they require sprinklers?
Typically, there are sprinklers in the front, the sotted fronts.
I'm talking about inside the units?
Oh, inside, whatever fire code requires, they're going to do.
John, do you know?
Generally, for townhomes, they're not required. For rental, they are, but like Mr. Bailey just said, it's up to the fire marshal to make that decision.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for James, comments? Okay, thank you, James, very much. You can have a seat. If there's nothing else, we'll move, move ahead with a motion. I do appreciate all the comments from all the folks I heard from, I heard from a lot of people. I didn't get to respond back to each one of you. I tried to send emails out, just let you know I did get it. I do read all of them, and I appreciate that. I'm going to make a motion at this time on Z-71 to approve Z-71 found on the west side of Terrell Mill Road at the vacant Schreiber Academy site for RA-6 zoning, subject to staff comments and recommendations, subject to the revised site plan and the stip letter received from Mr. Bailey that is dated July 29, 2015, with the following changes and alterations to that stip letter. So let's go through this list. Stip number one, I want to delete the sentence that begins with the words additionally, and I'd like to add or substitute, "The rear of all units facing Terrell Mill and including units number 17, 18, and 19 to be faced with 100% brick or a combination of brick and stone, with a final approval for the design to come from the District Commissioner." Now, there's some controversy there. We heard what Mr. Bailey's explanation was and what they'd like to do, but if you, like me, went down and looked at some of their, Polte's other units that he offered up, if you want to see what they look like, go look, I did. I didn't like the way they looked, and so I'm suggesting that we, we do make this four-sided architecture with mostly brick and stone. Let's go to stip number seven. I want to add, after the words, "Along the entire frontage of Terrell Mill," I'd like to add these words, "And on the northern property boundary adjacent to Cobblestone Walk," and then the rest of that can continue as listed, and that has to do with landscaping next to Cobblestone. Number 10, I want to add at the end, "Renderings of the monument sign," which we didn't talk much about, but we did see a picture of it. "Renderings of the monument sign must be shared with the Terrell Mill Community Association President and their board prior to the BOC hearing." That's a pretty easy thing to do. I had a number of people say we'd really like to see a rendering of what that's going to look like, so let's do it, let's accomplish that. Stip number 15, I'd like to delete that and have it read instead, "All construction, delivery, and employee vehicles to be parked on the site and never on Terrell Mill, Brookview, or any of the adjacent business parking lots." That request came from a business owner. Further stacking of vehicles will not be allowed on Terrell Mill Road. Go to number 16. 16A should read, this has to do with the hours of construction, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. 16B, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. C, D, and E are fine as listed. F to read. Existing buildings on the site, this is the old Shriner buildings, will be boarded up within 90 days of BOC final approval and demolished within 120 days of BOC approval. Now, if that doesn't work with their construction plan, they can take that up with the District Commissioner, but that's what I'd like to see. Stipulation number 18 should read, "Applicant agrees to install mature evergreen trees and shrubs along the entire 1,250-foot road frontage on Terrell Mill, with the landscaping to be irrigated and to consist of trees that are a minimum of eight feet in height, planted in a staggered manner." That gives you much better screening than planting them in a row. "Applicant further agrees to install brick columns a minimum of four feet in height and 10 feet, I'm sorry, eight to 10 feet on center with wrought iron decorative fencing between." That really is not spelled out in the stip letter, so I thought we should do that. "A planted berm placed behind the fencing will act as a screen buffer for all rear-facing homes on Terrell Mill." The plant... act as a screen buffer for all rear-facing homes on Terrell Mill. The plant varieties must be approved by the landscape committee." I want to add to number nineteen. I want that to read, "The applicant agrees to install a twenty-foot planted buffer on the northern property boundary." Now, there's some question about how much land is actually there, but they can work that out, I think. "On the northern property boundary between the existing cobblestone townhomes and the new Polte units, plantings to be evergreen, a height of not less than eight feet tall, and a variety approved by the landscape committee, county arborist, and also planted in a staggered manner." Go to number twenty-seven. At the end of that sentence, add the words per DOT standards. Number twenty-eight, I'd like that to read, "Within two years after build out," that has, this has to do with if we do wind up with a red light or a traffic light there. Within two years after build out, instead of two years from final zoning approval. I think that makes more sense. And I want to add a new one. This would be, become number thirty-three. "Applicant agrees to make a concerted effort to save the mature trees found on the street, on the northern boundary closest to the street of Terrell Mill, at the northeastern corner of the property, and identified on the site plan. Protective fencing should be installed at the drip line of each tree prior to demolition beginning on site." I'm done. I think that will make that my motion. Do I have a second or have a second? Any further discussion? Kristy? Sure.
As far as the construction hours, I thought you said ending at five PM. Can you talk a little bit more about?
Let's see, where is that?
Why five? I'm thinking if that's the beginning of rush hour, it may be difficult to have construction crews trying to leave and finish up.
I think that was during the winter.
And that seems like one of the earliest times we've ever required people to end their day. I don't know. I just, that seems a little...
They requested seven to seven, October through March, and seven to eight, April through September. And I had lots of people who complained about those hours. And so, I was shortening them just a little bit from seven to five and seven to eight, I'm seven to seven. I think we'll leave it at that.
I just think five is kind of punitive, and then it's going to be hard to even complete. You know, the more they can work, the faster they can get in and get done.
It's a ten-hour day.
But still, they can have by...
I don't know if we have a precedent for that, though. That concerns me a little bit.
The longer the hours, they can get through quicker. So, I don't know when you're working inside of a building, too, if it's at a clock. Who's going to hear it? Nobody.
But seven to seven is what they're saying they can do.
But five o'clock is, to me, would create more of a problem.
I would do seven to seven, and not give them till eight during the summer. Just still leave it seven.
All right. So, the number A under sixteen, currently, they're asking for seven to seven. I'll go along with that. The April through September, they're asking seven to eight. Why don't we just make them both seven to seven? Is that agreeable?
Yeah, that's better. And this is minor, I guess, compared to all the other issues.
It is. It's not, it's not a big deal.
They're surrounded. I mean, there's a shopping center on one side, an office building on the other. Most of the people on Brookview aren't that, you know, they're across a busy road anyway from this, so I feel like we're...
People I've heard from were concerned about construction traffic coming and going at six and seven and eight o'clock at night. And that was their reason for asking for a bit of a shortened time. I'll go with seven to seven for both those time periods, October to March and April to September. So, I'll amend it to that.
They can work on it some more over the next two weeks, maybe if they have something left.
Okay, any other comments?
Accepts the amendment. Yeah, accept that as well.
Okay, all right. So, we have a motion, we have a second, one change. Any other comments? They all in favor of the motion? Okay, good luck, folks. Thank you, James. What's next, John?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Res zoning case Z-73, Quick Trip Corporation requests rezoning from NRC and R-20 to NRC for the purpose of a convenience store with self-service fuel sales in Land Lot nine sixty-three of the sixteenth district. The property is located at the southeast intersection of Roswell Road and Old Canton Road. The applicants represent it as present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-73? Please raise your hands and keep them raised.
I sure wished you had taken a break.
You want to? You can.
Yes. Just five minutes.
Folks, I tell you what we're going to do. I've been asked if we can have a very quick break. Why don't you folks go ahead, leave your hands up so we can go ahead and get the count for Z-73, and then we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll come right back and get started again. Okay, folks, we are back after a brief break here and ready to go. I believe our next case, John, is, you tell us, seventy-three?
Z-73. And Mr. Chairman, before the break, there were eleven people here opposed to it. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
I'm sorry, John, eleven?
Eleven opposed.
Eleven opposed, okay. It doesn't mean you have to speak, but if you think you might, let's go ahead and get you sworn in.
I'm ready.
Okay, I think we're ready. Mr. Calhoun, whenever you're ready, sir, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Richard Calhoun, I represent Quick Trip Corporation here in Z-73. I have with me John D. Bernardo and Jim Kloon and Ben Qualls, if we have, if y'all have any questions for them with reference to anything on the application. What we're doing here is renovating and replacing an existing Quick Trip store that's been there for twenty to twenty-five years with a new Generation Three Quick Trip store. It's a, the original store, I think, was the zoning for, it was in nineteen ninety. The store that we'd like to build and replace with, place as a replacement for it is a five-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot store. It has a customer service area, however, of under three thousand square feet. To do this, we're purchasing an extra one-point-three acres located to the south of the property. And I'll show the landscaping plan now. I think that's probably one of the most important features of the application. And on the landscaping plan, we have the extra one-point-three acres right here. This is the original site. The existing store is in a neighborhood activity center. The additional property is right outside of it. It's zoned R-20. It's an older home. The staff has reviewed the application. They've recommended approval with several stipulations. And I'd like to go through some of the main ones. I filed a stipulation letter dated July thirty-first. It has all of our stipulations in. I'm not going to try to read them all, go through them. Certainly, I'll answer questions about any of them. The, in paragraphs one and five, we've agreed to wrap the entire site on the residential sides with a seventy-five and fifty-foot buffers. Now, these buffers were already there. They were part of the original zoning of this property. I think it even goes back as far as nineteen eighty-three or eighty-four. So, we're keeping those buffers in place, and that is, when you add all that up, that's an addition, that is over one acre of R-20 buffer that we are agreeing to leave in place as a buffer and to leave it zoned R-20 to serve as a cutoff point for rezoning. On the landscape plan, you'll see here, we've added trees and plantings in the original buffer area along the east side of the property and a lot along the continuation of it, and also on the south side of the property where we've agreed to build a berm to shield the detention pond from view from the south. As I mentioned, we're limiting the retail area. We're aware of the provision in the county code about a limit of three thousand square feet on the retail area. Obviously, the square footage of the building is larger than that, but the customer area, the retail area, is under three thousand square feet. And we're agreeing to stipulate to that size. It's going to be the same number of gas pumps, not going to be any increase in that. Same-sized signs. We've agreed to have the two monument signs on the road frontages, same height, same location. The, some of the residents in the Mitzi Forest subdivision requested that we pipe the drainage. There's an open channel that comes out of the existing detention pond. It's still going to run that way because that's the way the water has to run. But we've agreed to extend that discharge from the existing detention pond connected to the head wall, which we understand to be on Quick Trip's property, if the county will permit that, if the county gives us written approval from that. If it turns out, and I don't think that it is, but if it turns out that that head wall is located on private property, we would also obviously need an easement from the owner to connect that pipe. But as I understand it, Mr. Ms. Owens requested that because they've got a water and maybe a mosquito problem back there. And we said, fine, we're happy to do that. As far as the other stipulations in the application, the existing delivery schedule, we're going to maintain that. It's not going to really be anything new. Sixty to seventy percent of our deliveries are during daytime hours, Monday through Friday. There are some deliveries at night. Some of these are pastries and things that have to be brought in at, you know, after hours. But we're not really planning on changing the delivery schedule at all. We get about twenty-five trucks a week and twenty-five deliveries a week, and that's it. And that's not going to change. We've agreed to restricted construction hours, Monday through Friday, seven to four, Saturday, nine to two, nothing on Sunday. We've covered the monument signs. There are remaining items, several of them, that have come up, both in conversations with the East Cobb Civic Association and the Mitzi Forest homeowners. A drive-through, they've requested no drive-through. We don't have any plans for a drive-through, but we'd like not to be foreclosed from that possibility in the future. If we decided to add one, we're going to be subject to the noise ordinance, just like everybody else. If you look at the distance between the proposed building and the edge of the seventy-five-foot buffer, that's well over a hundred feet distance from the edge of that, from the property line to the back of the, to the back of the proposed store. With reference to the audio video communications, we said we're not going to have any outdoor speakers for any reason other than communicating with people buying gasoline and things of that nature. It's not, we're not doing any visual advertising or speakers for advertising purposes out there. We don't do it. It just doesn't, it doesn't work for us. We have two other remaining issues. Both of these are transportation. We, on our site plan, you'll see that we have two existing full-access driveways, one on Old Canton, one on Roswell Road. We're not changing any of those other than to restrict the one on Old Canton Road to a ride-in, ride-out. DOT has recommended ride-in only. We think that's going to create a bottleneck for us as people are unable to get out of that entrance. They're going to go back to the southern entrance, and that's going to be our only, that's going to be a bottleneck, but we think it's going to create a problem with internal circulation. We'd like to be relieved of that. We'd like to leave it as we have proposed, which is a ride-in, ride-out with a concrete divider, whatever the county specifies, that would keep people from making a left turn out of that entrance and exit on Old Canton. The second item in the DOT stipulations that we have a question about is the left-turn lane. The dedication of additional right-of-way, we think, is about five or six feet, and we're concerned that we are not going to be able to fit a left-turn lane in there on Old Canton, given the restrictions that we have now. It's, I think it's a, the county stipulates a hundred-foot right-of-way, but they're already, it's already filled with lanes, and without that, we can't take property from somebody else to build a center turn or a left-turn lane. So, we'd like to be relieved of that, or at least we can have conversations with DOT following the hearing to see if that's even possible. We think it'd be very, very difficult to do. With that, we're asking that the application be approved as we've submitted in our stipulation letter and with the comments that I've made here today. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we have several representatives here from Quick Trip that can also answer probably more detailed questions.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Let's go ahead and hear from the other folks now. Opposition, come on up.
My name is Vince Owens, and I was mentioned earlier as a property, we own the property behind Quick Trip, between the buffer and Quick Trip. And our problem is, I'm going to address the problems with our house and our neighbor's house, or what we see as the problems. Right now, they have trees up and a, I believe they say it's a six-foot wall, but the wall itself, and you can see in this picture, not a great picture, but I'm standing next to the wall. It's clearly not a six-foot wall. What I'm asking for is, I'd like to have a wall that's at least ten feet tall. Reason being is, that wall right now does not prevent people from throwing trash over, and I can show you another picture. This is what was found on the other side, all along, on the other side of the wall. There's just trash, just people would go over, throw trash over the wall, which then comes down, it gets into the water, comes down to our property. The other issue is the noise. We have, and this morning, I wish I'd recorded it, but six forty-five in the morning, they emptied the dumpsters, which we can hear clearly. So, the seventy, he's mentioning that the seventy-five-foot buffer is enough. It's not for the noise. So, no matter how many trees you put there, you can put big trees, small trees. The trees they have there now just don't cover the noise. And even if you put trees, it's still not going to cover the noise. People are still going to put trash through the trees. People can walk through the trees. We had an instance recently where somebody tried to carjack a car at Quick Trip, then ran through our neighborhood, ran back through the woods and through our, so. I would like to have a wall put up there, a higher wall, so people can't jump over it. Noise is kept on that side of the wall, on the Quick Trip side of the wall. Trash is kept on that side of the wall. And whatever they do with the planting, I think that's great, but I believe a wall is very important for that. Also, with the water, the runoff, I think there has to be a study done. And they did mention that they're going to cap, cap on our side. I'm not sure if that's going to be underground or not. If it's going to be above ground, I don't think that's going to be a real solution. It's going to look horrible. But if it's underground, and then what is going to happen downstream, and I believe other people are going to talk about that, what's going to happen downstream to our retention pond, our detention pond, and the houses that are along that stream downstream. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Joe Farrell, president of the Mitzi Forest Community Association. We acknowledge that a meeting was held with QT and the neighborhood, and the general feeling after the meeting was that it went well, and believe that QT would consider addressing some of the issues and concerns that were raised at the meeting. However, the general consensus is now, it's obvious that our community, that, to our community, that QT didn't really seriously consider any of our major concerns and simply held the meeting to be able to come here today and say they met with us. As of today, we feel the proposal is only about further development of the QT property in order to increase their profits with no benefit to the neighboring communities. Mitzi Forest did not really consider, request anything extraordinary. Mr. Owens talked about the wall, and you received some documentation from ECCA regarding the landscape plan. As far as the creek, going down to our retention pond and the retention pond itself, we were simply looking for some financial contribution from QT as further development is only going to exacerbate the issues we're experiencing with our stormwater retention pond, since all of the businesses on Roswell Road drain to our pond on both sides of Roswell Road, and it was not built for the volume of stormwater it currently receives. And QT rejected that idea based on the liability issues. However, we were just asking for financial assistance. We would, of course, indemnify them. We're not asking them to make the prudence themselves. So, I'm sure that Planning Commission in this case would prefer a compromise where there's a win-win for both QT and its neighbors. But we believe as of today, the zoning request is one-sided and solely for the benefit of QT, a company who says they're community-minded, but we feel in this case isn't acting as such. They've only stipulated to items we feel that they had planned to all along, and we urge you, Mitzi Forest urges you to deny petition at this time so that Mitzi Forest can continue to engage QT in an effort to do the right thing.
Thank you, Joe. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Justin Alford. I represent Service Corporation International and the H.M. Patterson Group. Our business is located at eleven fifty-seven Old Canton Road directly. HM Patterson Group. Our business is located at 1157 Old Canton Road, directly across the street from the proposed QuickTrip. We are unconditionally opposed to any rezoning. We question how public interest is served by granting this rezoning request. Any arguments that an expanded service station that encroaches on area residents and interferes with the ebb and flow of traffic from other local businesses is in the interest of Cobb County residents or specious at best. To speak to the specific concerns we have relating to this proposed project, the families and guests that visit our funeral home seeking peace and serenity will not be afforded such with a busy service station across the street. We believe that with this will significantly diminish the value of our services and our property, not to mention the additional danger posed to the guests with an entrance and exit across from our street. I wonder what kind of opposition we might face if we sought to put a crematory in at our funeral home, which would be far less disruptive than what QuickTrip is proposing.
Thank you, Justin. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Greg Legay. I live on Brown Point Place, one of the five homeowners, President of the HOA, the small little HOA. It's the first street south of the QuickTrip. And the five concerns that I wanted to bring up, on both my behalf and behalf of all the neighbors, are, we've got the mature barrier today. The mature barrier would be completely gone and replaced with a non-mature barrier at best. That's the first thing we would see when we leave our neighborhood, whereas today, we've got the mature barrier from what I heard, the eighties. So our loss of the barrier, accidents, congestion, that are already a part of that, get pushed down further towards the residential area. It already is unsafe potassium travels as you go further up, and that's just going to push that, you know, safety concern further down. We, our, the five homeowners today, and we maintain the median in front of our neighborhood, so the trash that we saw over the fence, we get the same trash that blows south, and it's just going to be, we're just closer to the source of the trash, if you allow the residential property to get converted to commercial. The last point, specific to Brown Point, is today, even with the traffic configuration, a lot of people just, customers at QuickTrip just give up, frustrated, trying to turn left. They'll come to our street, they'll either make a U-turn, or they'll go into thirty-seventy, the first home, pull into his driveway back out. We've got ten school-aged children now playing on the cul-de-sac as it is. Speaking with my neighbors yesterday, at this hearing, just thirty minutes throwing the ball in the street, had five cars come in, just come in and, you know, come in and zoom around, turn back out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jill Flam, and I'm East Cobb Civic Association's Case Manager for Z73. Up until 4:00 PM yesterday, ECCA had not received a landscaping plan for this application, even though we have been requesting one since July 21st. It was also up to me to distribute it to the neighbors. While the landscape plan does address some of the concerns voiced in our previous recommendation, we still have some questions remaining. First, we are still missing information on the height of the berm and the location, height and type of brick wall to be installed on the property. As stated by the neighbors previously, there's still questions of how high a brick wall are they going to be putting in. That also is not specified. Second, a wall of one-inch caliber scrub pines is not something we would recommend for screening, as they are a slow-growing tree and have little coverage at the base. We would recommend a staggered double row of thujas and/or cryptomeria, eighteen inches apart, and a minimum of eighteen, eight feet tall for the first two rows of screening. And we also would recommend substituting eight-foot-tall thujas for Leyland Cypress for augmenting the existing seventy-five-foot buffer against Mitzi Forest, as Leylands have a limited lifespan and suffer from blight. And I personally have just taken down forty-three of them with that problem. In addition, we'd like to know if there's any screening for the detention pond along Old Canton. Willow Oaks will provide little screening in the winter. The landscape plan is an integral part of the application, as it needs to provide a sight and sound barrier for all residential property owners, and care must be taken to protect the property in the area. We have not had a chance to fully examine it, nor have the neighbors had a chance to make recommendations back to the applicant. In addition, we recommend that a stipulation be added concerning the future addition of a drive-through coming back to the Board of Commissioners as an other business item, and the adoption of DOT comments concerning the entrances along Old Canton and the stormwater comments. ECCA still recommends denial of this petition until we receive answers about the berm walls and have a chance to talk with the neighbors and applicant about changes to the landscape plan, plus the additional stipulations. Thank you.
Okay, we are out of time. Is anyone else wishing to speak quickly? Okay, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. This is also in District Two, so I get the brass ring again. Lucky me. Z73, I have been out to this site on numerous occasions. Last time, I spent about forty-five minutes, either on the site or across the street, just observing the site. This is one of the busiest QuickTrips I've ever seen. We have one in Smyrna, where I live, that I thought was busy. This one eclipses that. People coming and going, hundreds of people an hour, coming and going from that site. I was there from eleven-thirty to almost twelve-thirty one day last week. I lost count. There were so many people coming and going. I agree, it is a very busy corner, but so is many other intersections up and down Roswell Road. This happens to be on a corner of a cut-through street. People coming from lower Roswell, over to Roswell, out Old Canton frequently use this road. And people wanting to buy gas and other food items from QuickTrip come there from the surrounding areas. So it's a busy intersection. One lady sent me an email and said, why can't we just make them go away, and let's put something there that's not quite as busy? Folks, that is not going to happen. QuickTrip would be crazy to abandon a site that is so busy and doing so well for them. I will tell you, though, in conversations that I've had with their attorney, who has been very good to call me back and speak to me many times about this, QuickTrip realizes that this site no longer really fits the area. When it was first built many years ago, it wasn't as busy, the roads weren't as busy. It doesn't fit that anymore. It needs to be improved, and nobody realizes that more than QuickTrip. We need to improve the flow of traffic, the safe flow of traffic in and out of this site, and many of the ideas that they've suggested, I think, will go a long way toward doing that. It does mean expanding the site. They no longer build this kind of store. They build stores that they call Generation Three. Richard, is that right, I believe? Which does have a larger food component to it, but it also includes enhanced landscaping. It also includes a much better traffic flow, which adds to the safety and the security of the area and the surrounding area and the neighbors. I heard from a lot of people. I got lots of emails about this. And the issues, again, I always like to try and boil it down to what the key issues are. The issues that most everybody mentioned was the traffic. Also, the noise. I heard from a lot of people, especially the four or five homeowners in Mitzi Forest, concerned with the noise. Buffers, they want to know exactly what's going to be planted. As Jill said, we did get a landscape plan late yesterday, but we did finally get it. I think it's a pretty good plan. There's some things about it I do question, but we do finally have that. And then, of course, the safety issue. One lady even sent me, last night at nine o'clock, sent me an email, you must read this. And so I did, and she was complaining about having rodents in her yard, which she's sure are coming from QuickTrip. Well, that may be. I know QuickTrip does take measures to be sure that that doesn't happen, but that might very well be. But lots of issues, mainly concerned with the traffic flow and the noise. So I want to talk a little bit about that. Jane, could I get you to come on up, and let's talk a little bit about some DOT issues?
Hello, I'm Jane Strickland with DOT.
Good morning again, or good afternoon again. Well, no, it's still morning. Still morning, okay. This is a challenging site from a traffic flow standpoint. I know that it is. I observed it myself on two trips out there. What is DOT recommending for this site that will help with the traffic flow through this site? What is specifically, what are you asking them to do?
Well, we're asking them to pull their full access back, which is what's shown on the plans. And then we're also asking for the other access point that's closer to the intersection with Roswell Road to be converted to a right-out only.
Right-in only?
Right-out.
Okay, so the one, the one closest to, on Old Canton...
Oh, wait, hold on, let me make sure.
Let's look at that. I think that was to be a right-in only.
I think you're right. I'm sorry. Right-in only.
Okay, right-in. So the one closest, the entrance closest to the intersection with Roswell, right-in only.
Yes, right-in only.
Is there some paving that they could do that would facilitate that, so that people know they can't come back out that way? I mean, is there something? Richard said they'd be willing to do something to make it clear to folks that that's a right-in only.
Well, you would, you would shape it such that it's a right-in only, and then provide signage.
Okay, so signage as well. Okay, what about the other entrance on Old Canton, which is down closest to the new detention pond? Is that an all-access, or what is it?
We're asking for, yes, it can be an all-access driveway. We're recommending a left-turn lane for it.
Okay. And the one that's on Roswell Road, which I believe is right-in, right-out now, is that right?
Yes.
Does that stay right-in, right-out?
Yes, I believe it stays exactly as shown.
Okay, one of the concerns that I heard from a number of neighbors is people wanting to cut through. If they're coming down, heading north on Old Canton, and the traffic light is backed up, I did observe people going through here currently. It's tough, especially now, to get to weave in and out and around the pumps to get on down to Roswell Road. And I was concerned about that. They have suggested, Pulte has suggested, that we allow them to put a couple of speed humps there. Does DOT have any say-so over private property speed humps?
No.
No.
No, it's off the right-of-way.
But I encourage them to do that.
Private property.
We'll ask Richard to come up and explain where they want to put those. So that might help. Also, some signage might help, which they didn't seem to want to do, but I think that might help as well. No cut-through traffic allowed, or something, something like that. I think that's all I had, right? Any other questions for Jane?
I just have one question. A lot of times, we see the right-in have a little pork chop that people tend to just try and just turn around. They make a slight bit of a U-turn, not really even much one. Is there a way we can design that so that there's a longer curb, so it would really make it difficult for somebody to come from the left, where they'd have to make literally a full U-turn into it, or something more than the little pork chops that people seem to go around all the time?
Yes, that'll be something we would address during Plan Review, but we really want it to be a right-in only. So we want it to be designed so it's clear that it's a right-in only. We have an existing crash problem at that driveway on Old Canton, so we really want to prevent anybody from trying to make a left turn into that driveway.
Yeah, because I was just going to mention that and say, this is actually an opportunity to fix a big problem, where there's been a lot of crashes there.
Yes.
So I want to make sure we do it right, and people aren't still making left-hand turns into there.
That's the other issue. We have had a lot of accidents in this area, both on Roswell and on Old Canton. I know you showed us in our work session a listing of how many had been there, I don't know, the last year or so, and it's substantial.
It is, it is. It's mainly the Old Canton Road.
Old Canton.
Access.
Do you know, was a lot of that from people coming into and out of the QuickTrip?
Right. It was mainly a left-in to the driveway, and then coming out of the driveway. So what we call a right angle. I'm not quite sure if they were making a right-out or a left-out. Probably most likely a left-out of that driveway.
Okay.
And then the through-traffic on Old Canton was essentially T-boning them.
The configuration now does not allow for easy flow through this site. The new configuration does improve on that somewhat. So we're hoping with this right-in only on Old Canton and the better traffic flow, that a lot of this will be helped. We sure hope so. Okay, did you have a question?
You're saying the majority of the accidents were a result of the QT?
It, we're, yes. We have accident data for the QT driveway.
For just the QT, not across the street, but just the QT?
Just the QT driveway.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Jane. I'm sorry.
Well, and it's not a question for Jane, but I'll just add to what we've said about the right-in only. I think that's really important. I spend a lot of time in this area, too, and because of the number of lanes, there's four lanes, all trying to go north. So for somebody pulling out of there, you know, that obviously creates some problems. And I'm really not sure that they have to have a left-in anywhere, if that would help with safety. But that's just, you know, a layman's perspective. But you can, if you're heading south, you can turn onto Roswell Road and turn right-in. If you're heading east, same thing. That Roswell Road access will let people come in from any direction. If getting rid of the left-in on Old Canton would also help, I think that's something to consider.
Just an observation, if, you know, the majority of the wrecks, and this didn't really address, are coming from the QT, why in the world are we considering enlarging the QT and making it a 5,000-square-foot, when they could remodel the existing O when, instead of increasing it?
They don't, they don't build those anymore.
I bet they would build it if that was a stipulation.
What they're doing, though, by, they're picking up 1.3 acres on the southern end, which allows them more room to flow traffic through there.
But I just question, you know, ordinance is 3,000 square feet in an act, and we're going up to 5,000. And I know we did up at, what was it, Wade Green Road, but it was a whole entirely different. This is, when you go down here, it's got residential. The one up on Wade Green was not as covered in residential as this is. So I question the need, especially across the street, we have the new, isn't that the Walmart grocery store across the street? So I just question the need of a 5,000-square-foot encroaching on all these neighbors. Just an observation.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd like to just, I love Christie's idea of making it right-in, right-out only at all their entrances, because that would get rid of that crash problem. And then I, then it helps, then we're fixing a problem that's there, and it gives a reason to justify, okay, we'll give you a little bit more space, but you're going to fix this existing problem that's a safety problem for everybody in the area.
Yeah, and I just have to weigh in on that also. I like getting rid of that. Is there a different, you know, picking up on your comment, is there, is there a smaller version of a Gen Three store that could go in here?
No.
I mean, that's not a question for Jane, but I'm just wondering if there is. But you're saying there's not.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think we, I'm sorry. I think we went over this at the Wade Green.
No, there's not.
We kept trying to come up with something smaller. I think this is the new, Richard, just shake your head, this is new prototype.
Richard, you're going to need to be at the podium if we get this on the record, so come on up.
This is the new size store.
Okay.
And what we've got here that's caused a lot of these problems is parking. We've got roughly thirty spaces. On the new plan, we've got, I think, well over fifty. And so that, I think, that is going to help relieve a lot of this, because the problem is, people come in, they can't find a place to park.
I saw a lot of people double parking, jumping out, running in, running back out, and then here comes someone trying to get to a gas pump. They can't get to the gas pump. It was pretty pandemonium. That's really what I saw when I was out there for an hour.
Well, can I ask one other question?
It's a busy store.
And it is a parking issue.
And enlarging it, we think is going to help.
Are y'all adding any pumps, any additional pumps?
No, no.
So the pumps remain the same?
Pumps are the same.
It's just the building.
The building, the building will be turned ninety degrees, and it'll be a larger building overall. But again, the customer service area is 2,000 square feet. It's not, it's not above the 3,000.
The building now runs north and south, whereas currently, it runs east and west. And that minimizes, that really affects the traffic flow in a very negative way, by making it longer, even though it's bigger.
Right.
And by picking up this additional property, it does improve the traffic flow, I think, by quite a bit. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Richard, while you're up there, just stay put there a second. Talk to me about the access points. We heard a mention here about having no, making everything a right-in, right-out, or a right-in only. What would QuickTrip, and do you have any engineers here with you that'd like to address that point? If you do, come on up. I'm sure we'd like to, we'd like to hear from you.
John DiBernardo would be happy to tell you the reasons for that. And basically, a lot of it is because we're not changing either one of the acts, we don't want to change either one of the accesses that we have.
Okay, give us your name.
John DiBernardo, no engineer, but I worked for QuickTrip a while with development. I guess in regards to the access points, I haven't seen the crash reports. I don't, honestly, I don't know what they are. I can understand that the lefts may coming out be an issue due to the proximity of how close it is to the intersection. But we're talking about sliding that new But we're talking about sliding that new full access intersection, which Cobb DOT was okay with, back more than 300 feet probably from that intersection. Um, it will line up with the intersection directly across the street. Um, I don't know what the crash report is at that intersection, but that's also cutting left across Old Canton. The road, it doesn't, isn't four lanes across where we're providing that access point. You're looking at the start of a D cell lane. I think it's that one or two through lanes and then one lane coming southbound. Um, it will line up directly. So I, I guess for the sake of that, you're gonna have lefts to lefts and rights to rights. I don't know quite why we would need to restrict that one to a right in, right out. I definitely can see your point of view from the front access point due to that only being about 100, 125 feet, uh, from the intersection.
So the, the, the point, um, from the intersection of Old Roswell, I'm sorry, Old Canton and Roswell Road to the first new entrance is how far?
I think.
On the new plan, 100 plus feet? Jane, do you know?
From the existing access point, which is, I don't know if I can show this or how I do.
You need to have a microphone. David, hand him a microphone too, please.
Yeah, your new access point from the intersection.
You need to use a microphone there, please.
To just this point. To just this point right here is 340 feet. And we're talking about pushing that second access point to here. So you're looking at roughly, I guess, 340 feet back on that new access point. And on this front one, which is here today, which we were proposing the right in, right out now, is roughly about 150 feet.
So that, that one is not moving?
This, well, we're proposing that this just stayed as was. And today it is a full access and we're proposing that it went to a right in, right out access. So we were already restricting it, which is what we were asking that today it's a full, can we take it to a right in, right out? Jane and Cobb DOT wanted it as a right in and proposed us the full access point.
The second one, which is down near the new detention pond, is over 300 feet?
Uh, it's right at about 340 feet.
From the intersection.
And if you count from the intersection radius to radius, you're probably looking at around 350 feet back. So I think that'll definitely help with the lefts out being that far away from the intersection. Especially since, you know, now you're lining up the two access points across the street. So you're not gonna have conflicting turning movements coming in and out of the site. And I don't know if Jane can better speak to that. That was their recommendation from the start. So I think that, you know, that, if that was their recommendation, I think it's pretty, you know, it's pushed back enough that that will be a lot safer of a movement than what we have today.
I've got a question about that.
And Jane, I want you to come back up again. I have another question.
If you were not to have that left turn in, that, that new, uh, access point further down Old Canton Road, that would force everybody who wants to just come into the store to turn left onto, uh, Roswell Road and then turn right and then work their way through the, through the, uh, the complex, right? So you're, what you're doing is you're transferring the, the accident potential from the road into the complex, it sounds like.
Well, now you're taking everyone that's coming southbound on Roswell that could pass, you know, your conflict point, which is your first one.
They'd have to turn left on Roswell.
Turn left in. And if you force everybody to turn left at the light, well, now you're looking at a stacking problem to turn left on Roswell. Does that have the stacking? What's the timing of the light? There's just more that comes into that that I don't think that, and we've looked at, because we were looking at the recommendation from DOT about the full access in the back and then the right in only at the front. So, you know, we were asking for that to be a right in, right out, you know, based on staff recommendation. If it went to a right in only and a full access in the back, I do think that's something we could live with. The only thing we'd wanna drop from the stipulation is the left in, because we, or the left turn, because we'd wanna look with Jane and make sure that, before that's required, that it can even fit within the amount of right away. Because you have four lanes and then one lane going southbound. And I'm not quite sure where you fit in a left turn lane with only, even though we're gonna dedicate 50 foot of right away from the center line, that's only about five or six feet and that's not enough for a full lane. And I don't know what's on the other side and if we can even acquire that right away to add that left turn.
So if we limit it.
Definitely something we would look into.
If we limit that second entry point on Old Canton so that you cannot turn, and then people coming off of, of Roswell will have no access to your site.
Correct. If you limit, correct.
Right.
We'll have to go to the light.
Well, they'll have, they'll have, they'll have to do a U-turn somewhere. They'll have to, somehow they'll have to get to one of the others from the different direction. They won't be able to come down Old Canton and turn left into the side.
Correct, correct. They'd have, yeah. They'd have to work their way back around to another access point if you eliminated that left in.
Yeah, I don't like that at all. I don't, I don't like that at all. Yeah, I don't like that at all. We may need some more study on that. Okay. Sure.
That was something I threw out because I use this, my office is right across the street. So I use this a lot. And, um, the left in is a problem today because of the proximity to the intersection. But I can see how moving it down, um, could help that issue and maybe help avoid some issues in the future. So I, I didn't mean to, to start anything with that, but it, it was an observation and an idea, um, based on experience.
Yeah.
Jane, come on back up. I do want to ask you something. Go ahead, Judy.
I wanna have you up here. Where does the truck traffic come in at? To delivery trucks?
Richard, help me out. Where's the highway?
I'm sorry, I'm not really familiar with the.
The most, the most delivery trucks enter from Roswell Road?
Correct.
I see a nod from one of your other.
The back of the store, so they would come in. Your deliveries are all gonna be from the back of the store.
So they're coming off of Roswell Road primarily?
And then coming in.
And going right to the back of the store?
Closest to the residential.
How they're gonna exit then?
They would exit back out, back on to Canton to the light. Um, by all means, we keep tractor trailers from turning left across traffic and.
Is there any way to divert it where you don't have the traffic? That, some of those are 18-wheelers.
Correct.
Coming in there, coming adjacent to the residential.
Correct. Which today, they're, the store sits this way and they're pulling in here and they pull into a slip, same area. So we're not changing the pattern that the trucks are delivering today. We're just more hiding it from the public eye. And I understand you're still, it's still adjacent to residential, but it's, there's really no great place to put it. And with our new layouts, we're trying to keep it behind. So you have your deliveries away from the main traffic flow. And that's kind of the problem with the old layout is you have your trucks here and it's kind of blocking that whole left side of people trying to maneuver in and out. You get two or three trucks right there. You have a Dr. Pepper delivery, a Budweiser, a, a Lay's chips, and you have them all congested right there. Then you're clogging up a whole area for circulation, which is why our new deliveries all come in through the back of the store. We have all of our storage along the back, all of our coolers. They can put it right in. They're not going through the front doors. They're not impeding with customer flow, pedestrian flow, which is kind of the whole point of that new concept.
What are they typically, the hours of those delivery trucks? What are their typical hours? Are they coming in at night or are they coming in at daytime or?
Our QT deliveries, Ben would ever to help us more, but, from an operations standpoint, who'd be able to answer that question?
Give us your name, please.
Ben Qualls, QuickTrip. Yeah, uh, this is one thing that did come up with Mitzi Forest. And the majority of our deliveries are Monday through Friday during regular business hours. Our deliveries though, we do have some that do come late in the evening, possibly overnight, but that's a very small percentage compared to how many deliveries we receive a week. And that's, that's mainly the QuickTrip trucks, the ones that deliver our fresh sandwiches, our pastries, uh, those items.
So y'all could be agreeable to a stipulation of no delivery overnight?
Uh, we can't do that.
Why couldn't you do that?
Because the way our routes are run with our deliveries currently, I mean, they would have to change everything across the entire division. And that's just something that I don't believe that they would, I mean, we could look into it, but I, I don't believe it's gonna happen.
So what about the, the dumpsters? Where are your dumpsters located? Um, next to the residential also?
You're talking one truck every other night that's a QT delivery. The main, your Dr. Peppers, your Budweisers.
They're all during the day.
You need to get to the, you need to get to the microphone.
They're all gonna be from about 6:00 AM through the day. You're talking just one 18-wheeler QuickTrip truck about every other day that actually comes overnight. Your other trucks obviously run normal business hours of, you know, actual, which is your Coke and things like that.
Okay. And then the dumpster?
The dumpster is right here, which currently it's right here at the existing store. So it's basically in the same location. One thing we were also looking at with the deliveries, because currently they pull into basically a slip. And then they have to, uh, back up. But right now, they'll be able to pull here and they won't have to back up. So that will help some with the beeping, the backing up noise.
Right. That was my next question is how to prevent that beep, 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 beep sound.
That's been addressed, yeah. With our new design, that is addressed.
All right. And then the garbage thing is gonna have padded lids or whatever you call those things where they don't rubber thing-a-jiggies. It's gonna be enclosed, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have those now.
That was a technical term there, that thing-a-jiggies.
And the beep, beep, beep. You did that very well.
Yes, the beep, beep, beep.
Well, let me ask, can we restrict the hours of trash pickup so that it's not occurring at 6:45 in the morning? And that, get those into normal business hours?
We, we can definitely reach out to, I don't know who we hire on in that area as a trash company. Um, but we can definitely reach out and look into the trash company and, and get an answer on that. I don't, we'd, like, we'd reach to our operations guys that's who handle all of that. And we could find out what hours they pick up. I don't know what their routes are. Um, normally those companies go on a certain route. I don't know if they could skip ours and come back after seven. You know, we're glad to hear from the neighbors on, you know, what they prefer. But then again, you know, we're kind of subject to their hours as well and their routes. So I don't know that that's an answer we could get overnight, but it's definitely something we could look into.
Okay, thank you.
Where did Jane go? I'm sorry, Jane. Jane, you showed us at our work session, um, a report that you had done on the accidents that have occurred in that area. Do you happen to have that with you?
I do.
Were most of them at the first, you said most of them were on Old Canton? Were most of them at that first existing entrance?
That's, that's the only, this, this is the one that we're.
That's what I'm asking. That's where most of them are?
Yes.
And so having, having that changed to a right in only and moving and putting the other one 300 and whatever feet away from the entrance?
I've scaled it to be about 250 feet.
Okay. 250 feet away.
How you would measure it.
Okay.
Which would be tangent.
Okay.
But it still would meet our standard for a full access. On a signalized intersection, it has to be a minimum of 250 feet back, so.
So what I'm thinking is with those changes, um, the number of accidents, hopefully that would come way down.
That is our hope.
That's the goal. That's the hope. And I know that's the hope of QT. I've been told that, right? Okay.
I mean, this is, this is over a three-year period. We can, we can update it, but it looks the same according to our traffic operations folks. It's been a driveway we've monitored for quite some time because we do have a problem. And I know personally, I've had near misses, several near misses at this driveway being, being a through car on Old Canton both directions.
I think QT knows that as well. So, okay. All right, that's all I have.
I have one more question for Jane.
Okay, sure.
They were talking about if there's enough right away to make a left turn lane in at that new entrance that's gonna be put in. Are you confident there's enough or do we need more, more right away from QT in order to make that happen or what's the case with that?
Honestly, a design, we'd need to put together a design, or their engineer would need to put together a design to see what would need to happen. Most likely that left turn lane would be, the existing left turn lane for Robinson, uh, for Roswell Road, excuse me, would probably be extended back and become a two-way left turn lane at that point. Would probably be the most, the easiest thing.
Okay.
And then it would have to taper back.
You're fairly confident that there'll be room to make a left turn lane into the QT?
I, I would, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jane. All right, let's, let's get away from traffic now and talk about some of these other issues. Noise, buffers, plantings, the wall. Come on back up, Richard. Talk to me a little bit about the wall. I've, I've seen the wall. I got out and walked along a portion of it. The wall that runs next to Mitzi Forest, which starts at Roswell Road and goes back quite a distance. Who owns the wall?
QT does.
And who owns the property on the other side of the wall toward Mitzi Forest?
QT does.
And what's the distance between, let's say, the back of the curve?
75 feet.
So 75 feet there. The wall is pretty close to QT now. But there's distance on the other side of the wall that also is owned by QT.
Right. That, that's, that's the 75-foot buffer. And that wall is, I, you know, I, I don't know how tall it is. I think it's 60 or 80 feet tall, whatever it is.
There may be some areas where it is six feet because frankly, in some areas, it looks six feet to me, but I didn't measure it. But I think most of it's about five feet tall. So I think the gentleman that told us that is right.
And the idea is to extend it horizontally, but not vertically. To extend it horizontally all the way down to the extreme south end of the proposed detention pond. And then from that point on, instead of building a brick wall coming toward Old Canton like there is now in the existing detention area, we'd just fence it and berm it.
A planted berm?
Yes, a planted berm.
That runs the full, that full distance, 200 and plus feet?
Right.
Berm, any idea how tall the berm you're suggesting the berm to be?
We, we, you know, we had left that, I guess, pretty much at the staff's discretion. You know, it's, we wanna make an effective screening berm and the landscape, uh, designer has, has specified a lot of trees to be planted in that area. I, I, I mean, we're, we're open to suggestions on that. I would think two or three feet, maybe enough.
No, it's not enough. Uh, four feet would be much better. Four feet sloped, fully planted, staggered plantings. Jill Flam said, you know, these little one-inch trees are probably not gonna get it. I tend to agree with that. You do have some nice height on, on the plan. I noticed everything is at least eight feet tall. Many of the trees are 12 feet or more tall. That's a good thing. That's good. But it needs to be heavily planted, the full width of that, which is well over 200 feet, maybe 250 feet. So I like the idea of a planted berm. It, it can work if it's done well. Doesn't work if it's planted sparsely, so that, that has got to be planted. In fact, I think you even show that. I think you show lots of red maple, some Virginia pine, lob lolly pine. Jill said she wasn't sure about using pine trees. They'll work. They'll be fine. If you use the right variety, they will work just fine.
There are 85 trees on that plan and I think over 50 of them are around that detention pond. And that, and that was the idea to, to make up for the, you know, for the lack of the, of the vegetation that's there.
The 75-foot area next to Mitzi Forest concerned me when I first saw that. It is heavily forested now, but a lot of those trees have been there for a long, long time. The greenery's all at the top. They're pretty much sticks from there down. They don't offer a lot. You have offered to put some trees in there, 10 or 12. I'm suggesting to you that's not enough. I'm saying that that's your land. You have agreed to plant it. I think it needs to be heavily planted more than what you're showing on, on this plan.
Okay.
So that's gonna be a suggestion that I'll clearly make to you. Uh, the height of the wall, you're gonna, the, the wall now comes down and then turns and runs toward Old Canton. You're gonna knock down the part that goes to Old Canton. But you're going to extend it on down to, to at the edge of the current or the new detention facility.
The southern end of the detention facility and that's where the two buffers intersect there.
And how tall will that extension be?
Same. I, I, I would, I think eight, eight feet?
No. It's not eight feet now.
It would match, it'd match whatever's there now.
Any reason why it couldn't be increased in height from that point on? That would offer some degree of protection and from noise and so forth?
I think we can look at it. I, I, of course, you know, a lot of that, I mean, the detention pond's gonna be down on the ground and then I think that, that, as, as the topo goes away from the site in that area, I think, I think, I know it goes down on the Roswell Road end and I don't, I think it goes down some on the, on the southern end as well. Uh, but I, you know, I, I don't think we wanna build something that's ridiculously tall.
But at least matching the height of the wall that's there now?
Oh, certainly.
Okay. Someone told me that they thought you had plans to remove the trees from that 75-foot area. Is that, that's not factual, I'm sure.
No, no, no. We're gonna keep all, the 75-foot buffer area and the 50-foot buffer area, we're gonna keep. And I believe the landscape plan shows that. We're gonna keep whatever's there and supplement it.
Will, will the new building be any closer to Mitzi Forest?
The new building, if, if you, if you get technical about it, no, it's actually gonna be further away because it's turning 90 degrees.
And is the new building taller than the current building?
It may be a couple of feet taller. Uh, it's 22 feet on the, on the new and I, I think the old is maybe about 20.
Okay.
It's, it's just, it's just the or. It's, it's just, it's just the orientation of the, 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 the existing building runs closer because it's lengthwise running away from Canton, Old Canton toward Mitzi Forest. And, and the new, and the new building would be the opposite. It'd be night, turn ninety degrees, so.
You suggested to me that some speed bumps or speed humps be installed on this property. Jane says they don't typically get involved at the DOT level. Where would you put those?
We, we, we've agreed to look at that. We, we haven't decided what to do with that, but we, we certainly agree. We would put it behind the building. Between, basically between the, the proposed building and the existing brick wall.
To discourage cut-throughs?
To discourage cut-throughs.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that should be done.
I don't know. We, we, we've never, we've never been asked to do that before, so I don't know, I don't know how well it's gonna work. But QuickTrip doesn't want people using its property as a cut-through any more than anybody else does. So it, you know, it may be that, that, it could become a necessity. But I, I'd just say that we, we've never been asked to do that before, but we're willing, certainly willing to consider it.
Yeah, I, I wanna go back to that wall. What, what's the purpose of that wall?
Right now?
Yep.
The, right now, the, the, the wall was built, and I think it was, maybe it may have been a stipulation of an earlier zoning. It was, it was, this, this property was, in fact, the, the whole intersection was rezoned in eighty-three or eighty-four. And then there was a, there was a rezoning for what's now QuickTrip in nineteen ninety. I believe that wall was probably part of those stipulations.
So...
I know that it was actually built as, as a part of the original construction.
But it's, it's, you know, it seems to me it could have a couple of purposes. One is to be a barrier for noise. Two is to be a barrier for what you see on the other side of it when you're looking towards QuickTrip. Third is to be a barrier for people throwing trash over the top of it, like we're hearing happens, at least on occasion. Your plan of, as I understand it, what you're saying is you would keep that wall and just extend it rather than tearing it down and rebuilding it. Is that correct?
Yeah. We're just gonna add to it, extend it southward.
So...
On the same, same level that it is. And, and I think, you know, a lot of the issue with that wall is whether it's six feet or eight feet, the, the folks in Mitzi Forest are downhill from that. So there's a limited amount of benefit, I think, that they're gonna get from that. Certainly, it prob, you know, a six-foot wall probably blocks noise, maybe a, a twelve-foot wall.
But it doesn't block the trash.
And it may not. Yeah, it may not block the trash.
I wanna ask you about that. In fact, one of the QuickTrip guys may be able to answer this better. When I use the QuickTrip near my home in Smyrna, I see constantly, I see QuickTrip employees out there policing the area. They're good to keep it neat and clean. I don't think you're policing the area in this seventy-five-foot buffer area. It's harder to get to. It's downhill. It's, it's got a lot of scrub brush in it and trees and so forth. I would strongly suggest to you that you make that a regular part of your policing efforts, just to be a good neighbor. I don't think increasing the height of the wall is the answer. I don't.
We, we don't either. For a lot, and like I say, for a lot of reasons. One, main one is just the difference in elevation between the QuickTrip and the surrounding properties.
All the houses sit much lower than this now.
It just, it's just not...
But if we address it, if we address it with regular policing of that area, just walk through, pick up the trash, you know, that kinda thing, would go a long way toward being a good neighbor to the folks that live in Mitzi Forest. And I would encourage you to do that.
I have another question.
I don't live on that side of town. I'll take care of mine in Smyrna.
I have a question along those lines.
Sure, Kristi.
Is there anything to prevent pedestrian access to the seventy-five-foot area right now? I'm thinking maybe people aren't throwing the trash over the wall as much as they're walking and loitering back there. That happens...
I don't know. It's awful. It's awful woodsy back there. And it's sloped. I, I don't know if there's anybody that's...
But we have that, though. I mean, in behind shopping centers where it's underdeveloped and wooded and easy to, to, to get in, teenagers.
If you look at the area, and I did walk down in there a little bit, it, it looks like it's a part of and, and belongs to the people who live in Mitzi Forest. And so people are not as inclined to go back and walk in somebody's backyard. I don't see any trails back there. I don't see any...
Pedestrian activity.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's, a lot of it, there's a pretty good-sized draw that runs, a drainage area that runs through there. And the slope going, again, going from the Mitzi Forest side on up to the wall is, is pretty, is fairly steep.
All of this tells me that the plantings in that seventy-five-foot buffer area are even more important. And planting the, the twelve or whatever it is, number of trees in there, just sort of spot filling in, is probably not gonna be adequate. I would encourage you to, to do more than that.
Right. And, and I think, you know, a lot of it's, we're just limited by what's there. We don't wanna cut something down to plant something else. But I, I mean, we're certainly willing to take a look at the landscape plan, see if there's some way that, that that can be beefed up a little bit. And that's...
Okay. Let's see if we have anything else here. We talked about delivery schedules. We've talked about the signage. We're still gonna have two monument signs.
Yes, sir.
Left in the same position where they are now.
Same place, same height.
Same height. I understand they'll be slightly larger, but not in height. Am I right?
No, that, that, we had, we had thought that we were going to need a variance for that because the, the sign copy area, I think on the original plan we had was sixty-nine square feet. So that would've meant that we would've needed a variance to a hundred and forty square feet outside that, that building setback line. But, but the, the plans that we have now, the, the new sign drawing, sign's actually thirteen feet, eleven and a half inches tall. The proposed sign. The actual sign there's thirteen feet, two inches tall. So there's a little bit of a difference there, but the copy area is what counts, and it's only sixty square feet. We're allowed a hundred and twenty. We're only asked, we're, we're only gonna have two signs, so we, we eliminated that variance. We don't need...
Okay, so that takes care of that.
Yes, sir.
How long do you anticipate the destruction and build-out to be? How long will that station be down and under construction?
Five, five months.
And when do you anticipate beginning? This year?
Four months. Four months.
And beginning?
As soon as we get, as soon as we get permits.
So this year?
That was, uh, yes, we could, certainly. I mean, that, that was one of the stipulations about the, about the, the, the house, that it would be boarded up within three days after we take possession. And, you know, the idea is we'll, we'll get our permits, then we'll close, then we'll board up the house and get going.
Okay, let's talk about the house. There's a house you're buying one point three acres next door. That house needs to be boarded up pretty quickly. How soon can you do that?
Three days after we, after we take possession.
Okay, so you're gonna board it up and, and demo it really quickly?
Three, three days after, after we take possession, and sixty days after we, after we board it up, it'll be gone.
What, what's currently in place, and I hesitate to bring this up, but I only do this because I got a call at nine o'clock last night from a lady concerned about rodent control. What, what do you currently do? I see the little traps that you put outside the building. What do you currently do to control? Because you're, you're adding a food component that you don't now have. And so she's really concerned about that.
I'll, I'll have to ask Jim or Ben about that. I'm, I'm not the rodent control expert here.
No, I am not. Good afternoon. I'm Jim Clem with QuickTrip. The amount of food is really kept in-house. It's not anything that is discarded other than directly into the dumpster itself. So there's not any food storage outside. Nothing is kept outside as far as that's concerned. That would be an issue for any kind of rodents or anything like that that would have it. Nothing's gonna...
How about food odors? We had one lady that asked me about...
There will be no vending of any grease or anything like that? No, sir.
No outside speakers, other than the ones at the gas station, which we all have?
For that, and that's strictly for, like, if somebody needs assistance, handicap services, things like that, at the pumps.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Jim? Okay, thank you very much. I don't have anything else for Richard. Anybody else? The issue really boils down to, as I said in the beginning, we have a, a safety issue related to traffic flow. We have an issue related to the buffering between this site and mainly Mitzi Forest. I think both of those are issues that can be resolved. And I think, I think that we have gone a long way toward beating that horse to death. I think that we know what we need to do. So unless we have other comments, I think I'll try to craft a motion. Anyone else? Okay, this is gonna be a challenge. Y'all bear with me. In regard to Z-73, I am gonna make a motion to approve Z-73. At southeast intersection of Roswell Road and Old Canton Road, the QuickTrip located there. Subject to all staff comments and recommendations, including the DOT comments and recommendations. I wanna underscore that. And subject to the STIP letter, and I have, I have a question about the date, Richard. The date that I have on the most recent one is July the twenty-seventh. You mentioned July the thirty-first, but I didn't get it on the thirty-first, so...
Yes, we, we, we had, we, we sent out the revised letter on the thirty-first. We just forgot to change the date at the top.
Okay, so we're gonna call it the letter of the thirty-first?
Call it, call it the thirty-first, and then I, we sent out another one with the corrected date on it.
Okay, so we have a...
July thirty-first is the latest edition.
I got you. Yeah, I do have it. It was just dated wrong. I wanted to be sure we had the right one. Okay, and subject to all the conditions listed in the STIP letter dated July thirty-first from Mr. Calhoun, with a few additions and corrections. Let's see what we can come up with. I wanna go to number five, which has to do with the landscape plan. It, in the beginning, the first sentence should read, "The subject property shall further be subject to the landscape plan approved, which will be approved by the county arborist and the district commissioner, and shall," let's see. Okay, let's just leave that as is. Let's go down to the third paragraph that says, "Unless deemed impractical." I don't like that wording. We'll eliminate that altogether and just have that sentence read. "All landscaping shall be installed prior to the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy." Go to the last paragraph, which will read, "All plantings installed within the buffered areas as described will consist of evergreen shrubs and trees, all the trees to be a minimum of eight feet in height, in substantial conformity to the landscape plan received August the third. Further, the fifty-foot buffer area south of the deten, the new detention facility will contain a planted berm not less than four feet in height, and extending the full length of this boundary, which is about three hundred feet. Further, the new detention facility will be fenced with Ameristar, and that's a brand name, but that's a faux wrought iron fencing that's very attractive. Will be fenced with Ameristar decorative wrought iron security fencing that is not less than six feet in height, and contains an appropriately sized security gate." Let's see. The seventy-five, and let's, let's go a little farther. The added to that same number five at the end, the seventy-five-foot buffer area closest to Mitzi Forest to contain a minimum of eighteen evergreen trees. They're currently listed as Leland Cypress, but I'd, I'd like us to look at that at plan review and have the arborist weigh in on that. But a minimum of eighteen trees planted in such a manner to offer additional screening in that area. I think that the trees and, and the shrubs that are shown for the detention area are gonna be just fine. Go to number eight. The sentence starts, "If feasible," I'd like to eliminate the word "if feasible", and have it read, "In order to discourage cut-through traffic, speed bumps, a minimum of two speed bumps will be installed at the rear of the store and will be constructed on the subject property." Go to number eleven, which reads, "No car wash facility will be constructed on the subject property. No drive-through facility is being requested at this time, but should one be desired in the future, a request for same must come back to the board of commissioners as an other business item for their consideration." I want to eliminate number thirteen as it's written in its entirety and replace it with, "No deliveries will be scheduled prior to six AM or after six PM on any day whenever possible." Now, you've said seventy percent come during the work hours. I hope it's at least that many. Idling of the trucks, we had a lot of complaints about that. Idling of delivery vehicles will be discouraged, and we can do that simply by posting a sign on the back of the building to that effect. And sanitation pickup must occur between the hours of seven AM and seven PM, Monday through Friday only." And I hope you can make that happen. Number fourteen should read demolition or, let me see here. Demolition or construction on the site shall occur, and these were the hours that came from you folks, and I like this very much. Demolition or construction work on the site shall occur between the hours of seven AM and four PM, Monday through Friday, nine to two PM, nine AM to two PM Saturdays, with no work allowed on Sundays. I want y'all to notice that, as opposed to the one we just argued about earlier. This, this is very good. I appreciate that very much. Number fourteen should read, "All construction and material delivery vehicles must park on the site, and no vehicles will be allowed to stack on Roswell or Old Canton Road." Let's see, we've taken care of the boarding up. That's okay. We've taken care of the signs. Number nineteen, I did not like the way that was worded. I'd like to replace that with, "Should any conflicts arise between these stipulations and county ordinances or zoning requirements, the county ordinances and zoning requirements will prevail." That's a little different than what they had there, but I think this one makes more sense. Number twenty, which is a new one. "The applicant will install signage that clearly states 'cut-through traffic is not allowed,' and I anticipate that sign to be at the second entrance on Old Canton. As you turn in, you have to make a quick left. Right there would be a perfect place to put a sign, trying to dissuade people from cut-through traffic." And I hope a lot of this can be handled, these, these other finer points can be handled at plan review. I did receive a lot of requests to finesse this with other things, but just because I didn't read it into the record does not mean it's not in the STIP letter. I think Richard did a great job with the STIP letter, and there are lots of things in there that, in fact, the neighbors did ask for. So I think, I think we're okay. And I think I'll let that be my motion.
I was second for discussion.
Okay.
With all those STIPS, we could have the Taj Mahal out here before it's over with. The other one that I really had a question about was the no trash pickup on a Saturday or... I can see Sunday, but Saturday, I don't know why we would care that, that's two days for a convenience store to have a lot of trash out there. They already have a rodent problem, so...
We can alter number thirteen then to be seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday. I have no problem with that if the second doesn't. You were the second, so...
I was the second, and I brought it up.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Then the other thing, the other question I had is those, I think that it ought to be not a requirement that they put the speed humps in until we, somebody, maybe from the zoning department, somebody from DOT looks at it, because we don't know what kind of effect it might have on those eighteen wheelers coming in. It might create more of a noise, thing-a-jiggy kinda thing, bouncy noise.
Trip that offered to do that?
But, yeah, but I don't think that should be part of the zoning stipulation. If they wanna put them in, they can. If they don't, that's okay, too, if they don't work.
It's one of their stipulations.
But they need to take it out.
Well, it's a stipulation, but it was worded previously as kind of a flexible thing.
If, if they need it. If, in fact, they need it. And that's the way I would like to leave it, if they need it.
If feasible, is what it used to say.
If feasible. And I like that. Yeah, okay.
We can, we can put the words "if feasible" back in there, if that satisfies.
Okay. All right, yeah. Yeah, that's good. Okay.
That's a good one.
They were two, two speed bumps.
Yeah, it should, it should still be at least two.
If feasible.
But we'll put the word "if feasible." This is in number eight.
Thank you.
Should read "if feasible," and then the rest of the sentence. Okay, go on.
I guess I'd just like to ask the applicant to work on getting a revised landscaping plan that incorporates some of this and maybe go a little further even before the board of commissioners' hearing.
Yeah, and that was my next.
So that we can do that, because there's a lot, there's a lot still to be flushed out here. I think there's, I think we're close enough. We can probably move forward with it, but they need some work done before the B, Board of Commissioners.
I would, I would suggest we put it in number five, which has to do with the landscaping. And we can, we can just simply make that a sentence in number five. That a revised landscaping plan must be prepared prior to the BOC hearing, encompassing all the things we've talked about here. Anybody else?
Yes.
And, and with enough time to be reviewed by Jill Flam and company.
Well, a copy of same should be provided to ECCA and the Mitzi Forest folks as well. Okay, we can do that. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?